Good morning, everyone. Welcome to live thepublicrecord.ca of Hamilton City Council today. As you can see, we have a couple items of note on today's agenda. The grants program, the new grants program that councillors have debated and have changed. So the Grants Subcommittee held two meetings in the past two weeks and the members of the Grants Subcommittee added various grants and top-ups to groups receiving funding within their wards. So that probably will create one heck of a debate today. Also on the agenda, we have a proposal to divest of Ockmore Estate. This one could be because the councillor says there are some nonprofit groups that wanted the opportunity to take on Ockmore. The City of Hamilton's outside legal council, Brian Duxbury, will be presenting on the city's case against Bell Canada that's going in front of the Canadian Radio and Telecommunications Commission. So the city is taking Bell to the CRTC over municipal access and right-of-way, that Bell has not been replacing road cuts and sidewalks, that they've been taking apart to install new fiber optic cables, and the city would like them to meet the city's standards on these issues. Regulations, don't need to say much on this. It's an information report. Basically, staff went to Uber, let Uber know that it's not prepared to allow them to operate without buying taxi licenses, and there's a limited supply in a private market for those, and Uber is getting taxi plates, and Uber will be launching in Hamilton. So staff will be updating councillors. That and councillors will vote if the city will take action against Uber. The item you see for annual audit, the police budget, that has actually been removed from today's meeting, pending more information. And then we have them from the committee to free Flamborough in front of council today. They're reacting to the plans to review. As you can see, councillors are filing into the council chamber for today's General Issues Committee meeting. Audio will go live just before the meeting does begin. Good morning, everyone. We are live here. It's 9:22 in the morning. As you can see, councillors are filing into the council chamber for today's General Issues Committee meeting. Audio will go live just before the meeting does begin. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:30 AM. We're live here at City Hall for the General Issues Committee, which was supposed to begin at 9:00. For councillors in the room, we need nine for quorum. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:30 AM. We're live here at City Hall for the General Issues Committee, which was supposed to begin at 9:00. For councillors in the room, we need nine for quorum. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:26 AM, and you are seeing live video in the background here at council chamber. Council is meeting in General Issues Committee here, starting at 9:30 AM. I would like to call the meeting to order. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals and media may also be audibly or visually recording this meeting. As well, a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during the committee meetings. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. Added as item 4.1, a delegation request submitted by Suzanne Mammell of the Hamilton Holton Home Builders Association, respecting report PED 15052, PW 15042, the Development Application Approvals Process Review. This item has also been moved up on the agenda to item 7.2, as there is a presentation to go with that. Added as item 4.2, a delegation request submitted by Dave Barnett, respecting tourism in Hamilton. This would be for the June 3 meeting. I believe Councillor Marula would also, after I go through the list, like to add another delegation request. Added as item 6.1, supporting documentation for the delegation by Gord McNulty, the 2015 Canadian Aviation Historical Society Convention Committee. Added as item 8.12, report respecting the Development Application Approvals Process. As I mentioned earlier, this has a presentation and will be moved up to item 7.2. Also, if committee wishes to discuss this matter in further detail, we can move into closed session at that time. Added as item 8.14, Grant Subcommittee Report 15001, from the May 8 meeting. Added as item 8.15, Grant Subcommittee Report 15002, from the May 15 meeting. Item 9.1, council had provided disposition on this matter at the April 8 council, and it went back to staff for report and then to AFNA, subsequently referred to the IC, and it inadvertently made it on this agenda. We're still pending a staff report, so that item should actually be withdrawn from the agenda. Added as item 10.1, a notice of motion respecting options regarding unanimous stakeholders' agreement known as Hamilton Realty Corp Inc., sorry, Realty Capital Inc. Added as item 10.2, a notice of motion respecting renovations to the Dalewood Recreation Centre. Added as item 10.3, a notice of motion respecting a memorandum of local amendment with the Hamilton Holton General Contractors Association, the United Brotherhood of Carpenters and Joiners of America Local 18, and the Corporation of City of Hamilton. Added as item 10.4, a notice of motion respecting open for business Subcommittee amendments to the terms of reference. And lastly, added as item 10.5, a notice of motion respecting the City of Hamilton's vision, mission, and, sorry, vision, mission, and values on the city's website.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Members of council, you've heard the additions. May I please have, oh, sorry, I apologize. Councillor Marula.
No problem. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Robin McGee has requested delegation status today on the Ockmore issue, so I'm glad it's moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Johnson.
We've heard the addition for the delegation, moved by Marula, seconded by Johnson. All those in favor, carried. Thank you very much. You've heard the additions. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Moved by Councillor Vanderbeek, seconded by Councillor Pearson. All those in favor, carried. Declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing as there's none. Oh, Councillor Johnson.
Declaration of interest, just to let you know that I can be here as long as we need to today, but I have to step out at 2 o'clock for a meeting, so just wanted to give you the heads-up. Thank you.
So it'll be in the interest of time?
It's a clock.
Councillor Pearson.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, yes, thank you. And I also have a meeting outside, I think it's about 2:30, 3 o'clock today, just to let you.
And we've heard some of the other concerns from council. I think the deal is, if you gotta go, you gotta go, but make sure there's somebody here that can maintain quorum.
So regarding item 3.1, may I please have a motion to approve the May 6 to 2015 minutes past presented? Moved by Johnson, seconded by Johnson. Moved by B Johnson, seconded by A Johnson. All those in favor, carried. Item 4.1, we have Susan Mammell of the Hamilton Holton Home Builders Association, respecting report PED 15052, and PW 15042, the Development Application Approvals Process Review. What is the committee's wish respecting item 4.1? We would like to hear it. Moved by Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by Councillor Marula. Is Susan available? She?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You would actually hear it under item 6. You're just approving the request at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I appreciate the clarity. Sorry for the confusion. We have item 4.2, Dave Barnett, respecting tourism in Hamilton for the June 3, 2015 meeting. What is the committee's wish respecting item 4.2?
Move by
Moved by Councillor Farr, seconded by Mayor Eisenberger. All those in favor? Carried. Consent items being none, we're on to item number 6, which is the public hearings and delegation. Item 6.1, Gord McNulty of the 2015 Canadian Aviation Historical Society Convention Committee, respecting CAHS 52nd National Convention and the Annual General Meeting to be held on June 17 in Hamilton. I would like to call Mr. Gord McNulty to the podium to speak on item 6.1.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the GIC. Thank you for the opportunity to advise that Hamilton will be the site of the 52nd National Convention of the Canadian Aviation Historical Society. The convention will be held June 17 to the 21st at the Courtyard Marriott. It will be the first to be held in Hamilton by the CAHS since 1984 and will undoubtedly be an exciting and informative event for aviation enthusiasts. Speaking personally, I can say that the lifelong friendships that are formed at these conventions are one of the reasons why the society has been successful for more than 50 years. 800 members of CHS is an all-volunteer, registered charitable organization dedicated to promoting and celebrating public awareness and preservation of Canada's unique and rich aviation heritage. In addition to nine chapters across Canada, the CHS produces an authoritative, award-winning quarterly publication, the CHS Journal. This year's convention will attract experts in civil and military aviation, authors, historians, photographers, researchers, and more. We have budgeted for 75 attendees coming from B.C., Alberta, Saskatchewan, Manitoba, Ontario, Quebec, and I'm pleased to say that in the last couple of days, we have delegates registering from Nova Scotia, so we'll have coverage from Atlantic to the Pacific. We have an impressive number of presenters, and we anticipate that the convention will build on the success of the 2014 conference in Regina, which involved the booking of at least 92 hotel room nights. This year's convention has added appeal with the Canadian Warplane Heritage Museum Skyfest on Father's Day. We have arranged alternative accommodation in Mohawk College and offering a variety of merchandise such as polo shirts, mugs, tote bags, and mouse pads. On behalf of CHS President Gary Williams of Regina and the six-member convention committee, I would like to thank Tourism Hamilton for its much appreciated assistance and support. I would also like to recognize the generous initial sponsors led by the Royal Canadian Air Force Association based in Ottawa and the RCAF Office of Air Force History and Heritage at Canadian Forces Base Winnipeg. Corporate sponsors so far have been led by CAE Incorporated of Montreal, Johnson C. Monroe Hamilton International Airport, and Ufly Simulator of Mississauga. The theme of this year's convention, the meet and greet reception at 447 Wing, is celebrating Canada's aviation history. The keynote banquet speaker will be Canav Books publisher Larry Millbury, a member of Canada's Aviation Hall of Fame. And distinguished speakers are tradition in Hamilton. The 1984 convention, held in conjunction with the Warplane Heritage, featured Air Vice-Marshall Johnny Johnson, Britain's leading Second World War fighter ace. We are promoting Exposa's full-day sightseeing tour of Hamilton on June 19. Three companies have made proposals, and we have advertised a tour proposed by Patterson Tours on the CHS electronic newsletter. With its remarkable aviation history, Hamilton is an ideal place for this convention. Our city was home to some of the earliest aerial aviation events in Canada, way back to 1861, when a huge crowd gathered to watch an American, Professor Thaddeus Slow, and a passenger ascending the balloon enterprise for a flight from Crystal Palace to 20 Mile Creek. Zaleen Bolak became Canada's first female pilot in 1928. Gerald W.A. Bell, a native Hamiltonian, was Canada's first black airman, and the list goes on. Convention registration is well underway. The committee is looking forward to a memorable conference and making Hamilton the best place for Canada's fraternity of aviation historians together. So it's a thumbs up, and I will be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNulty. We actually have Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. McNulty, for your presentation. It's really exciting to hear about this, and I'm really glad that you're including the 447 Wing in your festivities. If any, some good food and good stories, that's the place to start, so thank you very much for including them. You said you had three companies that made proposals on the tours because our HSR trolley bus was unavailable. Have you got any more updates on that? Have you got something that's solidified in that?
Actually, the whole business of arranging for a sightseeing tour is more complicated than it looks.
I bet it is.
Yes, so we'll have to see. It's complicated by the fact that most companies do want advanced payment, and so we're not sure how things are going to work out with Patterson Tours. They've been great, but the advanced payment is a bit of a complication. We haven't quite finalized the bus transportation from the hotel to the airport, so it's a possibility that perhaps the company that we eventually decide on for transportation, we might be able to work out something. But I just thought that Exposa's tour would be great. My wife really enjoyed the tour in St. John in 2012, and with these people coming from across the country, it's a wonderful opportunity to showcase Hamilton.
And thank you for that. And you're correct, Hamilton does have a long history of aviation, which is one of the main reasons why we've got the warplane situated in Mount Hope. As anybody would know, Mount Hope actually was, the Mount Hope Airport at the time was actually a WWII training period for space for the Royal Air Force, and even training can become fatal. We had 16 airmen that did not make it through training, and 12 of them are buried at the Mount Hope Cemetery outside the church. It'd be wonderful if we could arrange some of the tour to include that as well. Is there anything here that you're asking from this council today?
No, I guess I was a bit naive in hoping that possibly a bus could be made available, or we could negotiate a bus for the HSR, but I understand that it's a peak period of the season and operators are hard to find. It was interesting during this past weekend, I was at an Air Force convention in Belleville, and they arranged for Exposa's tour, but they likewise had quite a bit of work to pull that off successfully.
Okay.
The driver volunteered, actually, but they did have to pay the tour company, and it was a fair amount of work, but it was successful.
Thank you. And through you, Chair, with the indulgence of my colleagues, if Mr. McNulty and I can work between now and then, I might be bringing in a motion at council regarding this issue. So, Mr. McNulty, I'd like to work with you on that, if you don't mind.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor. It's much appreciated.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson. We have Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Good morning, Gord, and thank you so much for bringing your attention and your presentation today. Similar to Councillor Johnson, I was curious as to what the ask might be, because I did not see one in the presentation, but I would be delighted to second any motion that Councillor Brandon Johnson brings forward to do with organizing and helping out with your tour. To do with helping with the tour. Yes, I know you.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Gord, and thanks for all the hard work that your group does on this and other charities that you're involved in as well. Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions regarding the presentation? Okay, at this time, may I please have a motion to receive the presentation? Moved by Councillor Farr, seconded by Councillor Pearson. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you very much for your time and service, sir. I appreciate that. Item 6.2, Mr. Roman Serrachman of the CFF Committee to Free Flamborough to present a petition respecting ward boundaries and a petition respecting the review of amalgamation. I would like to call Mr. Roman Serrachman to the podium to speak to item 6.2A and B. Welcome, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council. Congratulations on your new elections. I haven't had the opportunity to come back and talk to you at the budget meeting, but my wife's still ill, but I see some new faces in here, so we've got a heavy, heavy, heavy job ahead of you, folks, a real heavy job ahead of you. Anyway, so I'm here today to talk about, talk about a few of the items.
Would it be okay if you just moved the microphone a little bit closer? I know it doesn't reach very well, sir, but thank you.
So for the sake of some of the new folks, I want to just talk about Flamborough, and Flamborough is about 10 times bigger than any other ward in downtown Hamilton. As a matter of fact, Flamborough is just as big as all the other 13 wards put together, so I just thought you'd understand that. Also, according to the school board, Flamborough is going to have over, more than 17,000 new people coming up in the next four to five years because of the growth. So in the review of the amalgamation, what we're asking, basically, we have over 1,000 signatures, and Flamborough was asking the mayor and the council to endorse a review of amalgamation in Hamilton to outline the positive and negative issues since the 2000 After, after 15 years, I think it's time for us to do an honest assessment for a couple of reasons. You want to find out what was good about amalgamation, what's not working about amalgamation, and what is it that we have to do to be able to resolve some of the issues, because the urban suburban split is growing. It's growing every year, unfortunately, and yet after 15 years, we really haven't seen any coordination. As far as boundary changes concerned, one of the things I want to mention is that when the municipal act came into effect, it kind of did a great misjustice to all the councillors here in Hamilton. The ward boundaries back in Hamilton were the same then as they are today. Unfortunately, that since amalgamation, a lot of aldermen was lost, a lot of councillors were lost, mayors were lost. So before amalgamation, you probably had maybe 45, 50 people running Hamilton as we know it today, and now it's only down to 15. So your workload has tripled, and it is, I must admit, it is a hard situation, and it's a heck of a lot of work for all you folks that you have now. The word "boundary change," we feel, is not the correct way to go to solve this particular One of the things, oh, she's slipping here on me here. One of the things we're basically asking is that, one of the things you could do is to help some of the mountain larger things, is to add more aldermen, help, basically help out, help out on the workload. Anticipate a growth. In Glanbrook and Flamborough and Ancaster, we're recommending another alternative other than leaving the ward boundaries alone, was for every councillor that you add in the city, you have to add a councillor in the suburbs, preferably, preferably in Glanbrook, Flamborough, and Ancaster. Since 2001 to 2006, it was very, very little growth in downtown Hamilton, but there was growth in Glanbrook and Ancaster, to the tune of 20%. And since 2006 and today, we had an explosion, both in Glanbrook and Flamborough, and this is going to continue to grow. More councillors in the city is going to create a serious problem as far as division between urban and suburban. Back in 2005, we were supposed to have a $400 million debt by 2012. Well, now, in 2012, we're saying that we're going to have a $400 million debt load by 2021. It keeps slipping, it keeps moving. If we have an unfair breakdown of councillors between urban and suburban, then the suburban people are going to be paying more than their fair tax share because of the area reading system and because of area assessment. The assessment in the urban areas is three times more than they are in the city core, which means that the people in the urban areas will be paying three times more taxes to pay off these debts. We, as you all know, we're going to exceed a billion dollars soon. It's really, really important to make sure that the split between urban and suburban, because if you look at the tax income, you'll see the revenue for Hamilton, you'll see that there's just as much money coming out of urban as there is in downtown core. One of the main reasons we have a problem is the headcount. In the first 10 years of amalgamation, we hired over 1,824 people, 1,824. That added $100 million to the budget. I'm requesting the mayor today that I really need an explanation of why this happened. Why did we hire 1,824 people? This was supposed to be the other way around. So I'm requesting that, please. As of course you know, it's way too much supervision. You've got 7,000 people right now, your highest employer, Hamilton, out of control. You can't run the business and then run a company of 7,000 people and still do an adequate job and pay off a billion dollars in debt. It's going to be an impossible task. One of the other things that we've done is we've added, we have 823 people in the Sunshine Club. That's another $100 million that we've added. 823 people and make it over $100 million. You really need to take a look at that and find out where it's going, because it's going to get worse in upcoming years. So one of the things I'm saying is, in an order, an unfair counter count is going to definitely create serious problems, you know, for Flamborough and the surrounding countries. Want to quickly show you about the taxes. This is retired, retirees and retired people, for the sake of the new, some of the new councillors, is that when we, when we were Flamborough, you see the yellow part leveled off, then we had regional government, of course, more government, there's more money, and then you see what happened in 2001 when we amalgamated with Hamilton. That trend cannot keep going. It's the trend that you have to take a look at. So summary, we want to remind all councillors and the mayor that Flamborough wants a review of amalgamations so you can do a fair assessment of what's happening and so we can find out what we need to move forward. You can keep the boundaries the same, or you had two alternatives, have more aldermen, no more clerical help, or you can have one extra councillor in the suburbs for every councillor that you add in the city. Spend less, save more. Hamilton is the largest employee, like we talked about. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Members on the speakers list, may I please have a motion to receive the presentation? Moved by Councillor Partridge, seconded by Councillor Johnson. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you very much for your time and your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
We're now on to Mr. Robin McGee. This will be item 6.3, respecting, if I'm a guessing man, Akmar.
Good morning, and thank you very much for allowing me to talk today. I was out of town and did not get to the 24-hour thing here, so thank you for walking us on and talking about it. Today, I want to talk about Akmar, and it's 8.11, and I'm here on behalf of the Mountain Heritage Society. I am the president of the Mountain Heritage Society, and I'm also here for the Friends of Akmar. Thank you very much again for allowing me. We request that Akmar is not sold. We request that Akmar is not sold, but remain in city ownership. It is a public asset that needs to be fully accessible to the public. The mountain has so few heritage properties, and Terry Whitehead can assess to that. It's a void up there with this is the marvel of the mountain, that we have to and must steward them carefully. A higher priority to our cultural heritage can be achieved if there is a will, and that will comes from this council. We have public support to keep Akmar in public hands, and we now need your leadership and your forward thinking to achieve that. To sell Mark, Akmar to the highest bidder is short-sighted. Akmar is an asset, and it must be kept in the public hands. Sell it and we lose it forever. It would be like selling Dunder and Castle on the mountain. To even consider selling Akmar, it is just wrong. And thank you very much. I sent to all of the councillors a three-page letter of the history of Akmar, and the, the presentation is short and sweet today. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGee. I certainly appreciate all your time and work on this. Councillor Whitehead.
Actually, I want to echo your sentiments in coming down. It's been a long journey for the Mountain Heritage Committee as well as Friends of Akmar. And I also want to extend, I see Jeremy's here, Colwell Walt, for their interest in, in preserving the national heritage and history of Akmar. The point you made in this, one I'm going to flush out a bit more later on the report, is the fact that, and I'm waiting for you to come back with that information, but it's my understanding that every geographic area in the city, this, the city owns heritage buildings. The only place they don't, well, so I'll flush, see if I can flush that out later. Thank you.
You're correct. Thankfully, councillor Whitehead, thank you for that. Are there any other questions regarding the presentation? Seeing as there's no questions, may I please have a motion to receive item 6.2? We have moved by councillor Conley, seconded by councillor Pearson. All those in favor, carry. Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much. We're now on to item 7, staff presentations. We have Brian Dukesbury will provide a presentation for item 7.1 regarding Bell Canada's Municipal Access Agreement.
Thank you through the deputy mayor and members of council. So Brian Dukesbury, as you will recall, was here previously at GIC presenting in enclosed session. And at the last juncture, when Brian Dukesbury was before committee, committee asked that staff bring back a public presentation dealing with where we are in the CRTC application regarding Bell. At the point in time, last before you in January of this year, it was before all of the filings were completed. It is now appropriate timing for Brian Dukesbury to be able to provide a complete public update on this matter.
Thank you very much for yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity this morning. I do have a presentation, and I'll just bring that up on the screen to give you an update on the status of the city's application to the CRTC. You may recall, the background of this matter is the city has something called MAAs or Municipal Access Agreements with your telecommunications companies that do business here in the city and go into your roadways. And these agreements govern the, the rules, the process, the protocol for them coming into your roadways and establish the guidelines for how they do that work. The city has had a very early generation documents, has something called an MAA or Municipal Access Agreement dated back to 2007. Over the years, the city was encountering difficulties with telecommunications carriers, and from the reports, you would know that in particular with Bell, the city was encountering some difficulties. So the city gave notice to Bell that it wished to negotiate a new agreement. The old agreement expired back in 2012, and since that time, the city's been trying to negotiate a new agreement with Bell in respect to some, some new ground rules for coming into your roadways. And that negotiation has not been successful. The city was looking for some new performance standards for these agreements, really a, a higher level of detail and, and protocol for Bell to follow so that there was better performance by Bell and some consequences to non-performance by the carrier in your roadways. We couldn't come to an agreement, the city could not come to an agreement with Bell on that, so the remedy available, the city initiated, it was an application to the CRTC to try to get some guidance and some input from the CRTC on a new municipal access agreement. You would see from the presentation that the city was experiencing significant cost impacts because of problems it has been having with Bell. And these relate to additional engineering costs, additional permitting costs, something called relocation costs, and, and another very large item, something called workaround cost. And, and what that's all about is that when the city is undertaking works of its own, on its own services and infrastructure in the city, it runs into these old conduits of Bell and other carriers, and there's significant costs incurred to work around those structures. Your new proposed agreement with Bell was trying to address those issues. We, we brought you just some reminders and samples of some of the problems, and here, here's an example of where the, the city was having to upgrade its own infrastructure, and it ran into some old conduit. You'll see it lying across the top of the excavation there, and the city incurred significant cost working around that infrastructure. We go from situations where you can use backhoes and large excavators to where essentially you have to hand dig, shovel dig around a lot of these installations, not all the time, but the point of it is, is that you incur significant greater costs to work around these kinds of old structures in the city. Your new agreement is trying to address and remediate against those extra costs. Here's another example, longstanding example, and here's a couple of pedestals that were installed out near one of the schools here in the city. And the first pedestal you see was installed in the wrong place, and the carrier was asked to move that pedestal. Notwithstanding the ask, the carrier then installed a second pedestal, again in the wrong place. And this is a line of sight issue. These, this is an entranceway to a school that's adjacent to these pedestals, and that condition still exists today, years later. It's an example of non-performance or the inability of the carrier to correct problems in the right of way. Here, here's another example where some temporary work was taped over, some duct tape placed across a sidewalk. It raises a safety concern. There's been a bit of to-ing and fro-ing with Bell over the, over whether that was their work or not. It certainly was, and it's an example of just some of the ongoing issues, not the most, but there's, there's many of them, and that's, that's an example. So the, the application that the city has made to the CRTC has attracted attention. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities was, certainly saw the application come in. They are supportive of the city, they have intervened and filed their own materials as supportive of the city's efforts to try to get to a new and better, more detailed MAA. You'll also see the fourth bullet point there, that the City of Calgary has also shown great interest in this matter. The City of Calgary has, they're actually responding to an application that's been made against them to the CRTC by Telus. And, and we've had a good deal of exchanges with Calgary, and they have very similar problems in their right of way with another carrier. So this matter has attracted attention at, at a fairly high level, at a national level, and just to take you to the, the timeline, here's, here's, I'll let you know where we're at today. The application was formally launched back in January with the CRTC, interveners and Bell, and Bell's response was largely built around the idea that there's a template agreement out there that has, people are encouraged to use, and Bell is saying we should be using this template agreement. It is a more simple document, it does not address the kinds of problems the city is having in, but the point of tension between Bell and the city is largely around whether that template agreement should be applied or not. We're actually waiting for some direction from the CRTC as to whether that's an appropriate path to go down or not. Bell has also taken issue with some of the city's factual assertions, and the city has responded to Bell's submission on this matter to, to correct some of their assertions in respect to the factual background. So all of the materials are in. The application is now constituted before the CRTC, and here's where we're at today. We expect shortly to receive some further guidance from the CRTC and what's to happen next. And there's probably three different things that can happen. The CRTC might say, spend a little more time on a CRT assisted mediation process. They, they can do that, they sometimes direct that one does that, so there may be some direction from the CRTC to, to, you know, Bell, City of Hamilton, go try to sort it out one more time. That, that direction may come. The CRTC might also come back and say, look at this template agreement that's been developed and see what terms you can, you can manage into your agreement and what terms you cannot. We may get some direction on that. The third avenue for the CRTC is that, and given the, the interest that this application has attracted with other municipalities, they may direct that there be a hearing, either a full hearing or a scoped hearing, where the city, the FCM, Bell, perhaps Calgary, perhaps others, taking a hearing whereby new terms and provisions will be debated before the CRTC, and there'll be some, some good new guidance from the CRTC on what is to happen. So there it is, Mr. Chairman, that's the status of this application to the CRTC today, and I hope that's helpful.
Mr. Dukesbury, thank you for your presentation. We have councillor Whitehead, followed by councillors Farr and Collins on the speakers list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, Groundhog Day, it sounds like Canada Post. The issue here fundamentally is one of standards and two of making the city whole, and any costs that are, that's imposed or picked up by the city. Is that correct? Is that the two main principles?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, councillor Whitehead, that, that is correct.
And I, I know that in my time on the board with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, they had a right-of-way committee. I know that right-of-way committee, a lot of the work was being done, because at that time, Canada Post wasn't even on the radar, was dealing with these very issues of, of making cities whole and, and standards. So the cities had the, were the stewards of the right-of-ways and to ensure that these standards, those municipal rights were being met, and that any cost occurred as a result of the telecommunications actions were picked up by the telecommunications company, not the taxpayers of the community. So it's clear here that true to that principle, FCM now showed an interest in intervening on this case, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, councillor Whitehead, that's correct, and supportive on, on those types of issues.
And I appreciate that, and I just want to remind my, my colleagues that this really isn't all that dissimilar to the very issue we're dealing with, Canada Post. It is, it is the same principles in regards to who are the stewards and who sets the standards on the right-of-ways, and any cost result of poor workmanship or deficiencies, et cetera, who should be picking up those costs? And I know and I understand that FCM is taking a keen interest because it's the same principles that they've espoused for many years in regards to the impacts on municipalities. So I want to highlight the, the, sort of the correlation between what's going on here and what may happen if we don't get a resolve on the Canada Post issue. And thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. We have councillor Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to councillor Collins, who in camera when we last met. Brian made the suggestion that you make this public delegation. Now and again, you have appeared before us on delicate legal matters, but always in camera, so it's a good opportunity for the public to see what our corporation goes after when it comes to outside legal. You've been very successful for us in the past, and wish you good stead, obviously, in this particular issue of which I had a lot of questions, as you may recall, many years ago. You went out and you answered many of them, and just two now, understanding the issue to its fullest extent. Number one, and one that I did broach or bring up in, in camera, you are making the claim, and I believe it, there's more and more municipalities that are showing considerable interest here, and certainly when you first spoke to us, we didn't have that commitment from FCM. Yet, we're going at this solo, so have any to date municipalities, large or small, that are watching this closely across this country, offer to contribute in any fashion whatsoever or to join our cause, or are we still in this solo?
Mr. Dukesbury, Chair.
Through the deputy mayor, I can answer that question. We did reach out to a number of municipalities, certainly all municipalities across Ontario and a number of larger municipalities across the country. Before FCM actually became involved, we did a reach out. And although we got a lot of moral support, and many are watching, we were not able to obtain any financial contribution. So we did try, we did not achieve that, however, it does not mean they are not very supportive and very interested.
Two-tiered billing, Brian, we, we pay you check and moral support, is that how that works? Thank you.
Janet. What's the exchange rate on that?
Through, through you, Chair. You've given three, you concluded with the three options of which the CRTC may come back at us with. My assumption is that the third option would be the one, which is the take it to a hearing. I'm not certain how to ask this question, or is it an in-camera question? Because ultimately, I guess, Brian, through you, Chair, this is a council decision on which to ask you to pursue, or we just tell you, maintain status quo, continue doing what you're doing, and we're waiting for the CRTC to respond at this point?
Yes, so through you, Mr. Chairman. Now councillor Farr, I think we're just waiting for the CRTC to give some direction. The ball is in their court, so to speak, and once we have that direction, it may necessitate the need to come back to you.
And may I ask publicly, stop me, Janet or clerk or whomever, you, what of the three you prefer? Through you, Chair. What's our best case scenario?
If we can just wait?
Okay. That's fine.
Janet, if you wanted to.
Through the deputy mayor, so I, I'm not sure whether we have a lot of say in how the CRTC ultimately directs that this matter will proceed. We are, that's why we're waiting, as Mr. Dukesbury indicates, we're waiting on the CRTC now to give us the guidance as to how we are proceeding. You will recall that you got a full report in camera with respect to the budget on this matter, and I can assure you that we are operating well within the budget that council set, and we are operating under council's direction to be proceeding. So we, we will revisit as required when we learn exactly which direction the CRTC wants us to move in.
Councillor Farr, does that suffice? Is that all the, all the questions, councillor Farr? We now have councillor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the question. It's safe to assume that if the, the old agreement expired in 212, just under half a million a year, we've now spent since the expiration of the old contract over $1 million, is that just on sidewalk work and sod restoration and those types of things? Who's compiling that list of costs and how is that presented through this application in the courts?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Councillor, that, those costs would be beyond those types of examples, the exact makeup of all that. I'd probably have to look to, to others in the room if you force some more detail on the spectrum of costs that are, are built within those kinds of numbers. It's quite, quite a spectrum.
Did basically the restoration work? Through you, Mr. Chairman, if there's someone on our staff that can answer that question.
Is there anybody on this?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. Those costs continue in a number of fronts. I mean, there, there's the costs relating to the permits and the cost of, of working through their permits, there's the costs that we encounter in designing around their work, it's, there's the costs that, to deal with, dealing with their inadequacies or inabilities to, 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 to work with us in locating in, in proper locations and us having to chase them and deal with all of the extra work around that, as well as the costs when we encounter it in the underground locations. This permit, or this agreement, hope will address some, if not all, of those costs in some fashion.
Okay, so when the issue is resolved at some point in time in the future, public works budget will be the beneficiary of the savings that we'll achieve as a result of ironing out the differences. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, that that's a fair statement, yes.
Okay, thanks for that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Collins. We have councillor Partridge, followed by councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And Brian, I appreciate your presentation very much. My questions were very similar to councillor Collins, so I'll consider them as an answer. Thank you.
Sir Partridge, we now have councillor Johnson.
Thanks. Through you, Mr. Chair, could you please give us a little bit more detail about Bell's response? You say that in its response... You say that in its response, Bell denies many of our factual claims, so were there claims of ours that they did not refute?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Johnson, there were claims we made that Bell simply did not respond to. There were a number of specific examples that Bell responded to where we thought they had the record wrong, and we've actually replied to those examples and corrected the record. We think we're right.
Does Bell admit any wrongdoing at all, or there's no admission of any small bit of wrongdoing?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. In Bell's responding documents, they do acknowledge that there have been challenges and difficulties over the years. They take the position that they've tried to improve that situation, they've tried to work through that situation with the city. Bottom line is, Counselor, that there's still many and many of those problems out there unresolved, and the difficulties continue to arise as well.
And is there any dispute about, so is it the case that there's a contract right now between our municipality and Bell?
There's no agreement in place right now. We're in a no-agreement zone.
I see. And is that a problem? Is that a problem in this case?
Yes, it is a problem because the difficulties the city's encountered continue to remain, continue to happen, and trying to ensure better compliance, better performance, it's not being achieved, and the city needs the strength of a new and clear and better document to make that happen.
And if we don't like what the CRTC decides, where do we appeal to from the CRTC if we decide to appeal?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. There are limited rights to appeal to the Federal Court of Appeal of Canada following a CRTC ruling. Usually those are on what we call matters of law, and sometimes there's issues of what we call mixed matters of law in fact, but there is some remedy to go to a court from the CRTC.
So, given the absence of a contract, is it the case that there are no, are there questions of law at stake in this, or is this entirely about the facts? Like, is there really a theoretical legal question here, or is it just about the facts?
No, there's legal issues embedded within this debate because there's an issue about how far can a municipality go in structuring the requirements for federal telecommunications companies when they're operating in the roadway, and that creates issues about jurisdiction. Is that really a federal jurisdiction? Does the agreement get into federal jurisdiction that it should not, or are they matters within provincial jurisdiction? There are some issues of law raised in this application, or potentially raised by it. There are also a great bundle of factual issues in dispute as well.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dukesbury, oh, we have Counselor DeVal.
Thanks, and thank you for the report, and just a question. When you showed the one slide there with the two boxes, what it was asked not to put in there because of the, it made blind spots coming in out of that driveway, I imagine, is that correct?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, that's correct, yes, it's a line of sight issue.
But we have any authority, and I guess the second box was needed, so the first box may be out of commission, I don't know. Do we have the authority to remove those boxes?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Self-help is always a very difficult remedy. There is the ability to go to the CRTC for interim relief if there is some situation that is simply, cannot be tolerated any longer. There is some ability to go there. It's a bit complicated, it still takes time. That might be the remedy for this situation.
So basically, it's their property and we would need permission from them, or they remove it themselves, is that correct?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, or the CRTC sheds some light on it as well.
Knowing that we've highlighted to them that it is an unsafe area, what they've created, if there was an accident to be, that happened, and it was caused by those boxes, who would be liable?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. In my experience, modern litigation, everybody gets named as a defendant, and in this situation, I'm sure the city would cross-claim or third-party claim against Bell because of the circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Keep up the great work, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor DeVal, will you please take the chair?
Thank you. Mr. Dukesbury, so in that case, that something were to happen there, you're stating that even though we don't have a contract and even though this matter potentially will be before the CRTC, we're still responsible for any of these kind of negligent or neglectful operations?
Mr. Chairman, this installation is on a roadway, the city's right of way, the city certainly would be named as a party, a defendant, if there was a problem in litigation. The city would certainly have an argument about transferring that liability to the carrier in this case.
So through you, Mr. Acting Chair, what other scenarios are like this which expose us to legal risk in this regard, through their negligence?
I'm pondering the many, many examples we have and the many, many contingencies and scenarios that might come out of those examples. This is probably one of the more egregious examples, if we're trying to understand the spectrum of exposure or risk here. This is probably one of the more serious examples. There are others of misapplied applications. Even that one's a potential situation of exposure to liability. Somebody trips and falls, and you see these claims all the time here in this municipality, that's another claim. So there are liability issues, there's liability exposure out there currently. It's hard for me, Mr. Chairman, to give you either the numbers, dollar value, or spectrum of that. There's a number of unresolved situations here.
I can completely appreciate that, through you, Mr. Chair, seeing that we have duct tape on our sidewalks here. Is Bell hiring or subcontracting other companies? It looks clearly like this one was done by Red Green. I'm wondering, are there contractors involved with these installations, or is this Bell?
Yes, Counselor, this carrier typically uses a number of subcontractors. It's part of the issue that's alive in this application about the appropriateness of that or the accountability for that, but yes, subcontractors are involved extensively.
So through you, Mr. Chair, and in keeping with our esteemed colleague, Counselor Whitehead, are these subcontractors also being, are they being listed, are they being recorded in terms of their negligent procedures? Are we finding that some subcontractors are more negligent than others, or how are we tracking who is doing what in that regard?
Counselor, there's good knowledge within Public Works of all of those activities and who those subcontractors are, and good records maintained of those activities, or the lack of adherence to protocol. I know Public Works has a good record of who's doing what.
That is good to know, and I'll just finish by saying, this is, you know, it's an embarrassing state when we have people, you know, subjecting our public to this kind of risk. It seems egregious and very negligent, and I appreciate that you're taking this on, I appreciate that council is taking this on, and certainly wish there was an exchange rate on that goodwill out there to have some other support across municipalities. At this time, if Counselor DeVal or anybody on the speakers list there, I'll take the chair back. Are there any other questions from the presenter or staff? Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Through you, Brian, what kind of timing are we looking at for any ruling going forward? We've seen the three options. What's your sense in terms of the timing around that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think we'll have some direction from the CRTC within the next 30 days. The CRTC can move quickly on hearings. For example, if it directs that there be a hearing in the matter, a hearing could come forward this year. They can move speedily.
Okay, and that's encouraging, thank you, because we started the process in January. January 9th is the date here for this year, and you're anticipating within the next 30 days, so it doesn't sound to me like it's going to be a long, drawn-out process, at least for part of it. So I'm encouraged by that. Yeah, thank you.
All right. And we have on the second time speakers list, Counselor Whitehead.
Yeah, just, you did talk about the $450,000 approximately a year, but the workaround costs closer to a million. So since the inception, I thought I saw an earlier report that said that the overall cost was over $2 million, that the cities had to pick up as a result of Bell. What is the total cost to date?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chairman. That might have been a cumulative number at the time, Counselor, and I don't know whether I could offer more today in terms of that number versus what you're seeing today.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and again, the reason why I was asking for the cumulative costs, again, is to emphasize that if we don't take positions and challenge the status quo, it's costing our tax dollars these additional dollars, and that's why I want the total impact since this agreement. Appreciate it, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, my pleasure. Seeing as there's no other questions, may I please have a motion to receive the presentation? Moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Farr. All those in favor? May I please have a motion to receive the report? Moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor B. Johnson. All those in favor? Carrie. Thank you very much, once again, sir, I appreciate that.
To give you either the numbers, dollar value--
I'd like to recognize Counselor Vanderbeek.
--or spectrum of that. There's a number of unresolved situations here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I can completely appreciate that, through you, Mr. Chair.
I'd just like to take a second to recognize some people that have just come into the council chambers. I don't have a solid secondary school in Dundas, of course.
Is Bell hiring or subcontracting other companies? It looks clearly like this one was done by Red Green. I'm wondering, are there contractors involved with these installations, or is this Bell?
They are downtown looking at some landmarks and thought they would come into the council chambers and just see how committee works, so if you don't mind, I'd just like to recognize them in the upper row here. So, welcome to all of them. Thank you.
This is where all the action happens, welcome, and certainly will be a test to see how long you guys are able to stick it out onto item 7.2. We have Jason Thorne, who will provide a presentation on item 7.2, which is the Development Applications Approval Process Review. Mr. Thorne?
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and the perfect topic to keep the students engaged and interested in the meeting. I'm going to be presenting this morning on the findings of the Development Approvals Process Review that's been ongoing for the past couple of months. Before I do that, I want to introduce Ian Neville, who's here. He is the chief author of the report, and he'll be here to answer any questions about the report or its findings after the presentation. I also want to thank and acknowledge the staff, the counselors, the stakeholders in the community who took the time over the past couple of months to meet with Ian and share some of their thoughts on the development approvals process. The impetus for this review comes out of the open-for-business work that was initiated by the last term of council. In 2011, council formed the Open for Business Subcommittee, and that committee's mandate was to review the city's general effectiveness at being open for business, streamline processes within PED and other departments to encourage investment by small and medium-sized businesses. In 2012, that committee brought forward the Open for Business Action Plan. I'm losing my audience already. It gets better. So the Open for Business Action Plan was brought forward to council in 2012, and it contained 69 different recommendations, really largely focused on small and medium-sized businesses, supporting small and medium-sized businesses. So the recommendations talked about customer service training for frontline staff, looking at staffing and the role of the one-stop, look at liquor licensing processes, the pre-consultation services offered by building vision, very much focused on small and mid-sized businesses. We reported in the last term of council about our status of implementing some of those recommendations. We've implemented or have ongoing about 87% of them, and a number of the recommendations did actually look at the development approvals process and called for the need for a drill-down analysis of the development approval process, and that's really what this exercise has been about, and that's what the report is about that's in front of you. So Ian was retained jointly by PED and PW to look at the approvals process, identify where there's some issues and opportunities, really look at what are the perceptions of our current practices, and how departments are working together, and to come up with some recommendations for improvements and for further analysis. So that's what I'm going to talk about today. I do want to say that it's important to understand what the review was and the approach that was taken. It was a qualitative review. It was conducted as a series of interviews. Ian met with over 100 different interviewees, as I said, counselors, stakeholders, folks from the building industry, small business owners, city staff. He didn't seek to try to validate every observation, every comment that was made, and it wasn't sort of a statistical analysis to test the validity of what was heard. The results are really intended to be indicative and directional, rather than sort of a quantitative analysis of the process. So the goal of the report is really point us in the direction of where we need to do some additional work and where should we be focusing our efforts over this term of council. The actions that Ian identified are grouped into five different theme areas, streamlining the process, looking at our technology, culture, capacity and leadership, relationships between the city and the development industry, and staff capacity, communications and morale. So what I thought I'd do in these slides is not try to give a line-by-line or go over every single action that's identified, I'm just going to hit on some of the themes, give a quick overview of what some of the issues are that were identified, and talk a little bit about the progress that we have been making concurrently with Ian doing his work. So I do want to make sure council knows that we weren't just sort of sitting on our hands for the last six months waiting for this process to be complete. We have concurrently been moving forward on a number of the recommendations. So the first area that in the report relates to streamlining the approvals process itself. The goal here is to identify efficiencies, improve timing, consistency and predictability of city decisions. Ian identified a number of things that the city's already doing quite well. He talked about our pre-application process, the integration of planning with growth management, which is actually a model that other municipalities are starting to follow, the city was the lead in doing that, our site plan approval process. He also identified a number of areas where we can make some improvements. He suggests doing what's known as a lean analysis, a real sort of drill-down into specific approvals processes to identify efficiencies, doing more post-ops, doing case studies of files after they've been resolved to see where improvements could have been made, looking at a fast-track process for significant applications, improving coordination and bringing in an open-for-business coordinator, providing as much upfront certainty as we possibly can in the process, specifically at the DRT stage, and looking at some of the coordination across divisions and across departments. So as I said, we've already been looking at a number of actions that relate to some of Ian's recommendations. I would say, first of all, we know that the best way to speed up the approvals process is to reduce the need to go through the process in the first place. So that, for example, is the thinking behind the zoning changes that were approved by council about a month ago, so that in some of our older commercial areas, you no longer have to go through a minor variance process to get reduced parking standards if you're just changing the use in your store. So that was, again, designed to sort of reduce the need to go through the process. There's also the thinking behind some, an approach that building is starting to take with respect to building permits. So when you come in for a building permit, Ed and his team have to look at zoning conformity before they can issue the building permit. So in the past, I'll use sort of a theoretical example, if you had a zoning noncompliance on your property, even if it was unrelated to what you're applying for, still couldn't issue the building permit. So theoretically, if you're getting a building permit for a back porch and your front patio was built too close to a property line, we couldn't issue your building permit for the back porch until you fixed the zoning issue on the front patio. So what Ed's looking at is an approach where if the zoning nonconformity on the property isn't actually relevant to what the application's coming forward for, if it doesn't actually make it worse or exacerbate the issue, we can still go ahead and issue the building permit. So it's a little thing, but it's starting to deal with some of the nuisances that we often find in the process. We're also looking at where we can make some small targeted improvements to shorten approval times. One example that Ed and Steve have been working on together and have been starting to sort of pilot and we're rolling out more is phasing our site plan approvals, our building approvals, with the applicant's construction timelines. So for example, in the past, before you could actually get your building permit, you had to have full and complete site plan approval. What we're looking at now is a phased approach where, once you have your site plan approval for your building location, your grading, you can at least get your foundation permit, so you can actually start the construction process happening. Then when you get your building elevations approved at site plan, you can go forward and get your structure permit. So your ability to start work isn't held up by end-of-process issues like landscaping. So again, that's looking at how we can make small efficiencies in the process. We've also started to look at doing some case study audits, some post-ops. Tony and his team just recently completed a third-party review of a project that involved multiple engineering submissions to see what we could have done differently, where improvements could have been made. We just created within the department what we're calling the Continuous Improvement Team, includes senior staff from my department, from Public Works. We're going to be meeting every couple of weeks to go over issues that have flared up, review them, not specific to those issues, but to understand what lessons we can take from those, what lessons we can learn, what process improvements we can make so those issues don't happen again. Another major recommendation coming out of Ian's work was around the Open for Business Coordinator. This is a very important investment, I think, that this council made in the 2015 budget was to approve and enhancement, to hire an Open for Business Coordinator. I'm very pleased to announce that Bill Jansen is going to be taking on that role for us. Bill probably doesn't need much of an introduction, he's been with the city or region for more than 30 years, worked in long-range planning, community planning, heritage design. With Bill, we have someone who-- With Bill, we have someone who has considerable experience, knows the process inside and out, has great relationships both within the corporation as well as with external stakeholders, can definitely hit the ground running, not a lot of sort of training and learning time that Bill's going to need to sort of take on the job. So, very excited that he's going to take on this role. His focus is going to be on process improvement. So, he's going to provide support for the Open-for-Business Subcommittee. He's going to lead that lean analysis of some of our processes. He's going to coordinate the different audits and post-ops that we'll be doing, oversee some of the technology improvements, the development of KPIs for the approvals process. That will be the focus of Bill's work. I do want to stress that it's not a complaints department. It's not a place you can go to actually bypass or get around the process. That's still going to be the responsibility of directors, the day-to-day work on applications. What Bill's going to do is step back from that and actually look at where we can make process improvements. The second area that Ian talks about in his report is around technology. We are behind in the use of technology to facilitate development approvals, and that's certainly something that came out of Ian's analysis. So, he suggests looking at a number of technology improvements to better coordinate comments, track status, provide for digital applications, provide transparency, monitor timelines, all of those things that we can do with better technology. Some of what Ian talks about is already well underway. Growth Management's now putting in place a tracking system. Have a snapshot look at when submissions were received, when comments were issued, what are the review times, what's the status of MOE approvals, Form 1 approvals, all of those sorts of things. We're also this year rolling out the Amanda system to, beyond building division and licensing, to also include planning and growth management. So, we'll have a single platform that will allow for sharing of comments and review of applications. I'll just give you sort of one example of some improvements. This was just an issue that flared up like a month or so ago, where when you come in for your zoning verification, the applicant gets their zoning verification. When they go for, planning has to go back and check again with buildings to make sure that the zoning is compliant, the drawings again to make sure they haven't changed from what they issued the zoning verification for. So, it requires looking at the application twice. So, with Amanda, we can just do a very quick check to make sure that the application submitted for site plan is the same as what was submitted for zoning verification. Might shave just a few hours off the process, but again, we're trying to look at little things that we can do to make some improvements. The Amanda team's also looking at automated license renewal, which used to be a manual process. So, now, at the end of each month, there's an automated batch renewal sent out for business licenses. And they're developing a tool, a dashboard tool, that will allow for things like email alerts when a deadline is being reached or when a deadline has been exceeded. You'll get email alerts to staff awarding of these things. The third theme in Ian's report relates to what he calls culture, capacity and leadership. And the theme of these actions is, or the goal of these actions is to instill a strong sense of ownership, empowerment, accountability right through to the front lines. And these actions really relate very strongly to training and development. And as you read through Ian's report, you'll see that that emphasis on training and development is a very strong theme that runs throughout. And this is something we heard both internally and externally, about giving frontline staff first the skills and then the autonomy to actually be able to apply their professional judgment and how they apply the guidelines and the policies so they can make those frontline decisions. So, in other words, to shift from what Ian talks about in terms of regulatory role to more of a facilitator role. So, again, we've been looking at, I think we made a number of strides in terms of training and development within the department. In the fall, we adopted the first-ever department-wide training and development plan for SPMs, project managers, supervisors and above. We're starting to use those now to develop personal training and development plans for individual staff. We also launched the Future Ready Program, which is taking 22 of our leaders within our department through a year-long comprehensive leadership development process. And we're looking at an onboarding plan for the new staff who are coming on to oversee all of this training and development. Again, I'm also pleased to advise members of council that Marty Hazel's agreed to take on a new role within the department of Senior Director of Strategic Initiatives. Prior to now, our department hasn't had a dedicated person to focus on training and development. It's been something that's been done sort of off the corner of the desk of a number of directors. But given the importance of this to our open-for-business efforts, I wanted to have someone who is really dedicated to this, someone who knows leadership development, who also knows the work of our department, knows the environment that we're working in, and I think Marty was the obvious choice for that. Again, I won't spend a lot of time introducing Marty. Again, somebody else who has 30-plus years working for the city in traffic and public works and finance, most recently in our department. Well, some members of council may not know as well is that for the past 15 years, Marty's been a member of the Continuing Education faculty at Mohawk College. He's an experienced instructor in workplace leadership. He self-published a number of leadership manuals and has extensive experience doing that sort of leadership development as an educator and in his own department. He's already been doing some of this work. It was Marty who led our department, the development of our department training and development plan, with Marty who designed the Future Ready Program with Mohawk College. He will be splitting his time in his new role between parking and body lot services and training and development. The training and development won't be a full-time thing. We're still, Marty and I, working out the details of what that job scope will look like, and we'll bring that back to council. But he will be continuing to oversee parking and body lot services, provide support for Ken and Bill, and spending half his time doing some of the training and development work. And I think it's something that certainly I'm excited about. I know Marty's very excited about, our DMT is excited about. And I think that putting someone of Marty's caliber in this role is really a testament of how important the training and development file is going to be to our open-for-business work and having someone with Marty's experience on our core open-for-business team. The fourth area that Ian talks about is the relationship between city staff and the development community. Specifically, there were some comments from the development industry that perhaps staff didn't fully understand, appreciate the pressures. And likewise, we heard from some city staff that perhaps the development industry doesn't understand the pressures and timelines that staff is under, the complexity of approvals, the fact that some aspects of process are outside of their control and involve external agencies. So, Ian talked about the need for more formal mechanisms for dialogue among city staff and the development community. And he also looks, you know, he talks about formal mechanisms, information materials, all of those sorts of things. Again, this is something where we've had some progress already. We have the Development Industry Liaison Group that has reconvened, is going to be meeting monthly. It's got representatives from staff, from the home builders, from the development industry at large. The Open-for-Business Subcommittee knows to be looking at ways to provide for a regular voice for development industry representatives. We did last year release our first report card on some of our initial KPIs, and we're looking to be able to, with the Amanda system, get more refined in terms of how we can do that reporting. And I think, again, the creation of those business facilitator positions that were approved in the 2015 budget will be another key way that we can improve the relationship between city staff and industry. But the final area that's discussed in Ian's report is what he talks about in terms of staff communications, capacity and morale. And really, these are a number of issues that really relate to the workload pressures that staff have been under. I talked about this a lot during the budget process, that heavy workloads have been causing significant staff morale issues and also process delays. So, in 2014, as an example, I spoke about this at budget. We were carrying about 20 vacancies in the planning division out of a staff complement of 70. We also had, and that was resulting in some development planners carrying 35, 40 files per person. We also were under considerable workload pressures in development engineering. So, Ian's review acknowledged that this was contributing to some of the delays in the process and morale issues, and he made a few recommendations in that regard. So, I think the most important step forward here is that council did make a very significant investment in the department in the 2015 budget. That's going to go a very long way to addressing the issues identified in this part of Ian's report. In the planning division, we've now filled eight of those vacancies. We've got five more that will be filled very soon. In growth management, we have posting out for the new engineers in development engineering section. We have the manager position in place, looking to make an announcement very shortly on the director position that's been vacant in that group. Also looking at how we can be a bit more flexible and nimble in how we staff up. So, right now in planning division, for example, we have different job codes across the whole division that makes it difficult to cross assign people and to move people in response to vacancies, maternity leaves, sick leaves, things like that. So, we're looking at standardizing some of the job codes. We've got a bit more nimbleness. We've also been rolling out performance accountability across the department. We have a plan now to bring that right through to the front lines. And last fall, we improved the department's first-ever department-wide employee engagement strategy. We now have an employee engagement team within the department as well. So, that's a very quick fly-through of what some of the recommendations are, as well as a status report on what some of the actions are that the department's been taking. What the staff recommendation is is to receive the report and then to direct staff to go back and develop a roadmap for the implementation of the recommendations contained in this report, some of the outstanding actions that still exist on the Open-for-Business Action Plan, some of the elements that are in the existing divisional work plans, and to bring that together into a roadmap that we can bring back to the Open-for-Business Subcommittee and ultimately to council for endorsement. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thorne. We have Counselors Farr, Collins, Mayor Eisenberger and Counselor Whitehead on the speakers list. Counselor Farr?
Thank you, Jason. Captivating. I'm surprised you lost your gallery there. Just have a few questions. One, you hit on how the approval of your budget, I think all but one of the staff you requested, is helpful, and that was Slide 14. And just to sum up to Slide 14, certainly you've, not only in addition to getting that staff that you required and the enhancement that you required, you were successful in engaging with us during the budget process. I see that you have these other points of progress. What about a timeline for some of this stuff and understanding its importance and hopefully with the recommendations received and forward today? Through you, Chair.
Yes, through the chair, timelines in terms of the filling of vacancies and enhancements.
Vacancies, the job codes, performance accountability and the engagement strategy.
So, through the chair, I'll go in reverse order. So, the engagement strategy is done now. We've established a departmentally last fall for the first time had division days across the whole department. It was one of the first actions rolling out that engagement strategy. Standardized job codes, that's something that Steve's focusing on within planning division, and that's well underway. We hope to have that finalized soon. In terms of vacancies and enhancements, as I mentioned, Steve's filled eight of the vacancies. We have a couple of job offers out or in the interview process that we hope to have five more of them finalized very soon. There are a few of the capital fund vacancies that will wait until we finalize the work plan around some of the grids and LFRI to work before we fill those. And in development engineering, we've filled the manager position. We'll soon be able to make an announcement on the director position, and we've got the ads out and the process started for the other, the development engineering enhancements. One of the top priority ones was the Open-for-Business Coordinator. So, I mean, Bill had been acting in that role for a couple of months, so now confirmed him in that role. The business facilitators, we haven't yet posted those ones unfortunately because the, we were actually very lucky to attract a very talented individual to take on the clerk of the Committee of Adjustment. Unfortunately, that person was also the coordinator of the Business Facilitation Unit, so now we have to refill that coordinator role, and then we can hire the business facilitators.
Okay, great. Yeah, with Bill and Janice and Marty Hazel, I think two great positions and hugely successful careers to date. So, I think you've put the right people personally in the right place there and applaud that and their ongoing commitment to the corporation. I want to kind of just simplify things because I started here in 2010. I'm an honored second-term councillor for War II, where quite obviously there is much going on in terms of development. And from the beginning, I've heard, and it was for me very general, it was tough to understand. And I remember, actually, I believe, the second-ever Planning and Economic Development Committee I attended. At the end of the meeting, I asked Tim McCabe why we can't just offer checklists for developers and tell them to go and check off all the things we tell them that need to be done for the development to get going. And if after that, we come back at them and add to that list, then it would be on us. And then Tim, in his gruff but sensitive fashion, shot that down. But I thought it was a pretty good idea because I was dealing with this fairly regularly where it's sort of that time is money argument for developers. Where, you know, you'd hear from time to time, we went to a formal consultation. We waited that two- or three-week period for all of those staff that are at that first stage of development, that formal consult. So, everybody that you need from engineering and public works and traffic and parking and all those people and the planners and obviously that sit in the room or in the circle and you're hoping, and I've been to a few, that all of them show up, the appropriate staff are there because time is money, and if they're not, it could take longer for an answer. And then they provide two or three weeks later to these outside investors a checklist, the list of things to do. And I'm still now and again, but a lot in the first term, heard a lot about, you know, we went out, we've spent the time, we've spent the money, we fulfilled all of those obligations only to find further delays, in some cases six or seven months or more, because things were added on, things were piled on. So, very generally, does Mr. Neville's work here, and moving forward, if we approve what we have here today, address that scenario? That's fairly consistent. It's not always, but a fairly consistent concern I've heard time and again. Through you, Chair.
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. Sure, there are shows, yes, that is certainly an issue that's captured in the report. It talks a lot about the need for that upfront uncertainty. When you first walk in the door, what's the complete list of everything I need? He talks specifically about the development review team process, which is really that point of entry for a lot of applicants. In terms of the checklist, you know, that has been done to an extent. One of the things that we heard a lot about was, you know, you get your site plan approval, and then you get, you know, the less sophisticated applicants get surprised when they find out there's a whole building permit process that comes after that. So, we have started to flag now, when you get your site plan approval, there is this other process that still has to be followed through so it doesn't appear as a surprise to certain applicants. I think another thing that Ian heard as well, you know, one of the things we actually want to improve in the DRT process is to make it a little less checklist-y. I think there is actually some pushback saying, you know, if all we get is a big, long list of here's all the studies you have to do. You know, some applicants are looking for a bit more value out of that process in terms of, you know, what are staff's general perceptions of where some of the issues might be, where some of the showstoppers might be at that formal consultation stage, rather than just sort of handing them a whole list of studies and say, you know, do those studies, and when you come back, then we'll give you some answers and some direction. So, to make that DRT process a bit more of a dialogue. It's difficult to do, and I wasn't here when Tim gave you his, would you say, gruff but friendly reply. I can tell you that one of the issues we face in that upfront process is we don't always have all the facts at that point. So, it's hard to give sort of clear direction, clear advice to an applicant because often the application changes a fair bit from when they first come to formal consultation to when you actually see a real application.
Okay, and to that point, and I had that gruff but sensitive conversation with Tim. If that changes, then it's on the onus of the outside proponent or developer or whomever. But if it doesn't change, and there are cases where it appears that that hasn't happened, and that was exactly Tim's response, actually, it was crazy down. That's exactly the way it played out in that second-ever Planning and Economic Development meeting for me. But if it doesn't change, that's where my suggestion, and apparently other municipalities have done this, and we maybe have done it similarly in the past, where if we're adding on without an application changed or without, you know, any new information that comes along, as was Tim's argument, that's the problem, that's why we can't do it, then I was suggesting that the onus be on us and we, you know, we move forward in that way at the time. I understand and appreciate this means to an end as well. But it would be on us because of the time is money argument. And we want to encourage more development and not have some potentially walk away and wipe their hands of doing business in Hamilton because of these costly delays. So, I appreciate that response, and I am looking forward to moving forward with this. Can you turn to Slide 5, please? I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what a lean analysis means, Jay. Through you, Chair.
So, this is really starting to, sort of through the chair, this is starting to look at a drill-down into specific processes. And the idea behind lean is that it really is led from within. So, it would use an expert in the process who would kind of facilitate that discussion, but it's having the people who are actually involved in the process identify where improvements can be made. And I can tell you that the kinds of questions a lean, they're called black belts, the people who kind of are the experts on the lean process. You know, they'll drill into the process to say, okay, you know, why do you do a certain thing this way? And Chris actually used an example of where this was done in Niagara region, talking to some of the lean process folks there. And, you know, the response comes back saying, well, you know, it's a statutory requirement that we do it this way. So, you say, well, where's the statute? Maybe it's not a statutory requirement, it's a policy. Well, where's the policy? Maybe it's not a policy, it's actually just sort of the way we do things. So, it's drilling in, it's through conversation with the people involved in the process, drilling into how everything is done and looking at, you know, are the right hands on the files or are we being as efficient as we can? And I can tell you where Ian identified sort of as the priorities and certainly agree with them is looking at subdivisions and site plans as two of the key areas where we want to start doing that kind of analysis.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Chair, to Mr. Neville, Mr. Mayor. Just wandering through this extensive work, it ended up being more consultation than you anticipated and with the focus on the outside community, the outside developers, large and small, that you spoke to. Was there any one prevailing theme or message that you heard? Any area of particular focus for us following this phase? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the one factor that came out across the board, certainly from the external stakeholders and the internal stakeholders, was to speed up the process. That is the fundamental problem. up the process. That is the fundamental problem that the development community was expressing. Obviously, they had other issues, but I think that would be the main one.
Okay, we have Councillor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through you to Jason. Jason, I was just going to pick up on that time issue that the development community raises as their top priority, as well as the accountability issue, and you've raised both of them here. This process and the changes that will come as part of this report coincide very well with the recent enhancement through the budget process. How are we keeping track through key performance indicators as to whether we're improving internally and whether our clients or the business community, development community, are satisfied with those results? Or are we, is there some kind of feedback a year from now, half a year from now, internally and externally that gauges whether or not the budget enhancements are working and/or whether the process changes are working? Through you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So in terms of whether or not the process is improving, whether it's getting faster, we did in, I believe it was July or August of last year, release sort of a first report card that tried to start to quantify what some of those approval timelines were. So we certainly anticipate doing that on a regular basis as a report card. It was, I would call it a rough number what was brought forward last year, because until we have everything operating on the amended platform, it becomes a little bit difficult to be precise in our benchmarking. But that is the goal that we're working towards. So we can actually provide those, you know, number of days from receipt of submission to site plan approval, whatever the application was. So that is a big part of the work that we'll be doing. A big part of Bill's work as the open for business coordinator, sort of put some of those KPIs in place. With respect to whether or not, you know, the perceptions of the process are changing, certainly one of Ian's recommendations is that we go back, I believe he recommended after a year, and talk to, do an interview process again, and talk to some of the people who are part of the process, and get that qualitative feedback as to whether or not the process is improved.
Thank you for that. And I know you provide, the department provides regular numbers in terms of building permit statistics, value of construction. Will these KPIs be part of a regular reporting process to council, or is it something that you just review with your senior management team?
Through the Chair, yes, it'd be to council, it would also be to the community, to development industry. That's where we like to get to in terms of our progress reporting.
Great. Next question is about the organizational change and the strategic initiatives. Can you expand upon the issues related to morale and the culture change? It seems to be a common theme in the last couple of weeks. How is that unfolding and how is council involved in that process? Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Through the Deputy Mayor, I can tell you that in terms of morale, I mean, there's certainly where there were significant workload issues, especially in planning and growth management is where we're seeing the strongest. And I can tell you, when I brought forward those recommendations to council, it was always already in recognition that those were out there. I'd obviously been having conversations with Ian as he is working through this process and having conversations myself. So I knew where some of those investments we need to make, which is why I sort of put those specific asks in front of council. And I can tell you that the investments that were made, even though we haven't filled all of the positions yet, it did send a very strong signal to my staff. I can tell you that very strongly that, you know, I've been going back now to staff, sort of, I went to them pre-budget and talked about what I'd be putting in front of council, and I've been starting to go back now post-budget and talking about the investments that were made. And starting to see new bodies in the office has already had, especially in the planning division, has a very positive impact on morale. Even if it hasn't started to make a very big dent in the actual workloads yet, just see that things are moving and see that we're staffing up has been, I think has been very positive, and I think one of the most significant benefits of the investment that council made so far. So I think we can, I think those improvements are already being seen.
Last question. When are we at full capacity? When do we reach a point where we can advertise to the investment community and the broader community that the enhancements that we've approved have all been implemented, and the process changes that are here as part of this presentation are not just slowly rolling out, but completely implemented from top to bottom in the organization?
So through the Deputy Mayor, on the staffing enhancements, we are close. I would hope within the next three or four months, we would have filled right through all of the positions. In terms of the 20 vacancies in planning, the intent is not to fill all 20 of those because some of them are actually capital funded policy positions, which would be filled if and when we have the policy initiatives to deliver on it. So the intent wouldn't be to completely fill all of those. With respect to your second question, but when will the approvals of the process be finished? I'd suggest that they will never be finished. This is a continuous improvement cycle. But part of the roadmap will be at least the ones that are in front of us right now, and the ones that are still outstanding from the open for business action plan. We'll put a timeline to those as part of that roadmap.
Safe to say by year end, the bulk of the work will have been completed and will be at full capacity as it relates to processing applications?
Through the Deputy Mayor, there are some very long-term recommendations, both in Ian's report and the open for business action plan, some that require, you know, looking at things like online submissions, that's going to take some time to get our systems to be able to accept that. So I wouldn't want to say that all of those will be done within the year. I can tell you that sort of the runway that I've sort of given to all of this is within this term of council. I want to see these recommendations as well as more that I expect to come forward in the future implemented and be, and be able to see very strong evidence that our timelines have been improved.
Just from your comment there, what capital issues are outstanding then? What investments would council need to make to expedite that process if we didn't want to wait until 218 and wanted to implement some of the changes sooner? What kind of dollars are we talking about? Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Through the Deputy Mayor, it'd be premature for me to sort of put that to you yet because that's part of what we want to do, and we're looking at what does that roadmap look like? Some of the, certainly the online stuff would carry a capital cost to it, but it would also be a resourcing issue because we already actually moving quite quickly on getting our amended system put in place department-wide. So I wouldn't want to put a specific dollar figure to it at this point.
But you'll come back.
But part of the roadmap, we'd certainly identify those that have a capital or operational impact, for sure.
Fair enough. Thanks again, Jason. Great presentation. And thanks to senior management team for endorsing this and guiding us through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Collins. We have Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you. Jason, a great presentation and great work by Mr. Neville and senior staff. And, you know, I think by, you know, an indicator of the importance of this and for this council is that kind of the wealth of questions that are coming. I think it really is a strong indication for all of us that this is beyond growth, which I think is key priority number one. This is key priority number two, I think, in terms of getting this right. I am, you know, I'm not going to lay the kind of the issue entirely at the feet of our staff, but that's what we're here talking about, is how do we make our process as predictable and consistent and speedy as possible, notwithstanding the constraints that exist in terms of other approval agencies that are part of this process. So I think that was well reflected in the report. Certainly, there are areas that we need to get at and they've been known for quite some time, and we're actually now taking the steps necessary. And I think the questions that were asked here previously are kind of benchmarks in terms of how we continue to roll that out and work with the subcommittee. So my hope is, and my belief is, that the subcommittee will continue to track how this moves and that they'll continue to push to make sure that we're moving in as speedy direction as possible, and that the reporting back to council and the public at large, I think that's a, it's a broad issue for the community at large, in fact, that we continue to report that out and let them know that we're making progress, which we already have, in fact. So I want to make sure that we're also telling the story in a kind of a public way, as we are today. But added to that, in a moment, I'll add a motion to include a couple of non-voting members on the subcommittee, which I think is going to be helpful that we continue to coordinate with the Hampton-Holton Home Builders Association and the Chambers of Commerce, and in fact, anyone else. If I've excluded anyone, that would be useful in terms of sitting at the table and hearing the ongoing work and progress. I'd rather have that happen rather than reporting to one agency through a filter that might, you know, end up changing the message. And, you know, also not being shy about, and the report reflects that, indicating where there are deficiencies in the industry that also need to be talked about and flushed out and relayed to the industry and worked on. You know, this is a dual process, you know, for the experienced part of the industry, that's probably pretty easy to do. For the inexperienced part of the industry, people that are coming in for a single application have never been part of the process, we need to make sure that our process is as understandable as possible and that they understand the problems that might write into, you know, sooner rather than later. And I think that's the whole point of the process. So I'm not sure when the appropriate time is, but it's connected to this particular issue. So maybe when you, we voted on this issue or received the report, I'd certainly ask for a moving emotion to include the Chambers of Commerce and the Hampton-Holton Home Builders Association. So let me know when that's appropriate, I'll do it whenever that's appropriate.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We're just going to receive the presentation. Unfortunately, we missed Suzanne Mammell's delegation, which should have been heard before. So right after this presentation, we're going to hear Suzanne first and then go back for the report and any motions.
Good.
Thank you.
I'll do it then. Thank you for the effort. I think the effort has been actually superb. I think council has made some strategic wise steps in terms of the staffing issues. You know, we can't expect people to do that much more, you know, billions of dollars of applications with less and less people. That doesn't jive. So we're taking the appropriate steps to make sure that we have the right staff, and then making sure that we have the right staff then leads us to make sure that we also track the important performance improvements that we're making on an ongoing basis. And I think that's clearly what the subcommittee will do and report back to us. So I'm delighted to see where we are, but I think a reminder to us all that, you know, beyond growth, this is priority number two. This is kind of the key issue that I think we need to deal with as a city. And I think in the next year or so, I think we will have gone a long way to addressing some of those ongoing concerns that have been around for years. So thank you for all that great work, and thank you to council and the subcommittee and the consultant. I think they've all come together to lead us into a path that I think is going to be very positive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the speakers list, we have Councillor Whitehead, followed by Conley, Ferguson, and Marula. Councillor Whitehead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I remember when I was the Chair of the Planning Committee several years ago, and met with the Hampton Home Builders, and had a roundtable, and Tim McCabe attended that discussion. And we heard, it was one of those frank discussions where nothing would come back. We just wanted to get a flavor of what the concerns and issues are in regards to processes and comparatives and so forth. And we got an earful. Since then, we've come a long way. We created the Open for Business under the stewardship of, leadership of Councillor Powers. We've made some marked improvement in understanding and mapping out the issues, working with the different stakeholders, and we continue that work. And I think this is a culmination of, a continued culmination or evolution of that process. The number of questions I have, first is the, one of the biggest issues I heard and hear over and over again, I mean, you can have all the great processes in place, but if only one person is ultimately making decisions on applications, for example, you just indicate you're hiring a bunch of new engineers. If they are not empowered and have the wherewithal to make decisions, and it has to run up to up here, then you create, now you've got a bottleneck. So I guess it's a cultural shift. How do we flatten the decision making process so that it is not hierarchical, but it's more flattened out in regards to those frontline people that are actually working on those applications?
Through the Deputy Mayor, it's a good question. I think, you know, that to me is one of the strongest themes that emerged out of the report was the need to sort of push more decision making to closer to the front lines as possible. That's, and so you can get sort of certainty when you first walk in the door. And I think that's why there's such a strong emphasis in the report as well on the training and development aspect. Because I agree with you that there's a cultural component to that, there's also a skills development component to that. And it's why, early on, I started to have the conversations with Marty, identifying that leadership development, skills development is going to be such a huge component of open for business, and that we needed someone with that skill set as part of our core open for business team. So I agree with you that that's where we need to get to. And I think, as you look through the recommendations coming out of kind of Ian's report, that's certainly a very strong theme.
Appreciate that. The next one is cost. I wrote down cost, and I think you can take that from two positions. One is that, and I remember meeting with Tim, and he had indicated, because the point that Mayor made is a valid one. You have the developers who have a fee, and they pay a fee, and then you have an individual person who's just, you know, severed a lot and developing the lot adjacent to the property. We're looking at the cost, and I said, why are they paying, because a lot of the small organizations are being charged pretty significant money for whether it's zoning change, whatever. And when I asked how that costed out, they indicated, well, it's sort of a flat line. And as it turned out, the little guy was actually subsidizing the big guy. So to flatten out the overall costs or all the development fees or all the process fees, you took this number and sort of stretched it across the board, which really meant, you know, if you really want to do cost association, really meant that the little guy was paying proportionately much more than they should be for their applications. Are we looking at true cost in regards to complex development versus simple development, multi-tier versus single-tier? I mean, all those processes, are we being fair to that entrepreneur, that individual that is, you know, is out there building hundreds and hundreds of homes, but building one?
Through the Deputy Mayor, so the fee structure that's in place was based on sort of an activity-based audit of how long it takes to, on average, to work through some of these approvals. That's the basis for the fees that are there now. Ian does talk in the report about, you know, needing to look at that again in the future. That is something you, you know, review on a regular basis. I think that's one of the longer-term actions, because we just did do the fee review very recently. But certainly, the idea is cost recovery, is what fees are intended to be based on. And I was talking about business facilitators during the budget process. One of the suggestions I made with those business facilitators is that some of the smaller business owners, some of the businesses in the rural area do need a bit more handholding. That is a bit more labor intensive for our staff, and that's one of the reasons behind the business facilitation, to give that bit of extra service. That's not actually fee recovery, that becomes levy recovery, but you give that extra service, that extra handholding to some of those businesses. So I agree with you. I mean, fee recovery is the model. I know that, you know, council and the fee by law also provided some discounting for agricultural businesses, for rural businesses, those sorts of things to reflect what you're talking about, that some, you know, that their deep pockets aren't necessarily there in some of those areas.
Well, I mean, give me an example. You're applying for 20 homes in regards to zoning change versus a single home zoning change. You're dealing with the same cost, and yet what's more, might be more complex?
Through the Deputy Mayor, we do have a tier structure where you have, you know, if it's a major rezoning versus a minor rezoning, major site plan, minor site plan, site plan amendment. So there is an attempt to kind of differentiate based on the complexity of the application. You know, it can't be so nuanced that you have, you know, you've got to fall in kind of one of those categories. But there is a recognition that some applications are more complicated than others, and that should be reflected in the fee.
Yeah, and I want to make it clear, it was the general manager at the time that indicated clearly to me that, yes, the way the fee structures are, there is a subsidy that's been created by the small person coming in paying a higher rate proportionally than they should be to offset the overall rate that everyone gets charged. That's the comment I heard, and I thought that was completely unfair and needed to be addressed. So hopefully, we're looking at those fee structures and making appropriate, you know, real cost recovery versus an averaged breakout of cost recovery, because there's different approaches to cost recovery. I'm not sure the model we're using is one that is penalizing the little guy. The other question I have is KPIs, well, actually, stay on cost. The other issue, and I hope we're going to do a lot better on this one, is that there's been a number of occasions I'm aware of, where, again, small businesses coming forward and told that they needed X, Y, Z report, they go out grading report, whatever. So they go out, hire a consultant, get the work done, while they end up spending $12,000 on something that they could have spent $2,000, $3,000 on because the report's much more extensive than what was really needed. So it's never really clearly argued. So there's something lost in regards to trying to ensure that, you know, we're trying to be friendly to the business community coming forward, and we want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem in regards to the costs that occurred through these processes. So the mindset needs to shift into saying, look, we need this report, but you don't need to do X when all you need is Y. So I want to make sure that that culture thought is there, so we're not imposing unnecessary cost to applicants that are opening businesses or building this community.
Yeah. So through the Deputy Mayor, I think you flagged an issue that was brought up through the course of Ian's review, was, that's why I was saying earlier to Councillor Farr's question, that, you know, that there was a criticism, sometimes that initial step can be a little too checklisty by just saying, well, you need a traffic impact study. Some applicants are looking for a bit more guidance about, you know, how comprehensive, how detailed, what issues should we focus on in that traffic impact study? I mean, I can tell you, I've been a consultant, I can give you the $50,000 version, I can give you the $5,000 version, and I know which one I would usually recommend if it was left to me. So being able to provide that staff level direction to help understand just how detailed you have to get in those follow-up studies.
I appreciate that. And the last question, and this is the one that always seems to be anecdotal, from the, anyone doing business and then are frustrated that things aren't necessarily going as fast as they would expect, is that, well, you know, it's faster in Burlington, or it's faster in Oakville, or it's faster here. So when I deal with KPIs, and you obviously belong to an organization of So, when I deal with KPIs, and you obviously belong to an organization of your peers through a lot of those communities, is there any agreement on what KPIs we should adhere to in regards to the measurement so that we're not being played from community to community, that there's a constant measurement on these type of issues?
So, through the Deputy Mayor, it's a great question, and I have actually had that conversation with a number of my colleagues in other municipalities, and the short answer is that there's not really an accepted benchmark of how long it should take you to do X process, and it's not something that frankly, I've seen any municipalities do particularly well in terms of having very clear benchmarks. There's a few that have established good targets, but don't necessarily have the performance metrics and will be able to report on those targets. So, my hope is that, you know, we're going to be on the cutting edge of that, where I'd like to see us get at the city.
I hope that, you know, through ONB and the province of Ontario that are looking for benchmarks and standards, that this is one area that, instead of having this game going on, that they go to community, community does it better, you could actually look at empirical data and say, actually, you know, we're at the same level, or we're doing better. Because right now, without that empirical, empirical data, we don't have that evidence, and it makes it a little more difficult and more anecdotal. So, hopefully, we work to get that done. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. We have Counselors Conley, followed by Ferguson and Marula. Counselor Conley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Ian for the report. I read it for three hours last night, and it's laid out very nice, it's laid out so people like me can understand it. It covers a lot of the areas that, or most of the areas that I would even think about, so I appreciate that. And you're the right guy to do the job, Jason. I've only been here six months, but I get a lot of complaints from developers and small businesses, that the red tape here says too much, they're frustrated, they don't want to work with us, and I've even had one say, I'm never going to work here again. I think that was out of frustration, and he's going, he will again, but this kind of attitude flourishes around, like, it's not just one, if one thing of it, there's 10 thinking about it. And I really hope that this report addresses this kind of stuff. Red tape can be a killer, and a lot of times, I've had to go and talk to somebody in planning and try to work it out, and I'm not working out from a professional, I'm working out from a political point of view, but lots of times, it does, but I don't think it's something that necessarily should happen. But I'm glad to do it if I'm asked to. It talks in the report about, we're very low in our housing starts. We do 1,800, but we should be doing 3,300, I think, to the next, to 2031 in order to keep pace. And are the plans to reach that goal in the next couple of years, or what? We don't go from 1,800 to 3,300 in one year, I realize that. But do you think it is possible that we can make these projections to either you or Ian or whoever wants to answer it, through the chair?
Through the Deputy Mayor, yeah, so Ian does talk in the report that we're sitting around 1,800 units, our growth forecast projections should have us in the 3,300 range. I can tell you that, and Suzanne can maybe speak to this in a moment, in terms of what the development industry says, they've got the capacity to do and the demand that exists out there, then I think that's a doable number.
Thank you. I hope it is. And the other thing I've always had a concern about, even when I was on Stony Creek City Council 100 years ago, is infrastructure. And it seems we build all these houses, but we don't have the infrastructure for them, and then we panic and have to build other roads and bigger roads and bypasses and everything. And some cities, I'm under the, I've been told, that actually do do it, do the infrastructure, get it ready to handle the houses. We get the houses ready, but can't handle the roads, and right now, I've got some problems up in my area just because of that. We've got tons of houses going in, but not very many roads to take care of them. And we seem to, the attitude is, well, let's get our money first, our development money, and then we'll build the roads afterwards. And I know that's, I guess, from a business point of view, one alternative to do, but it really makes it hard on the communities when there's traffic jams all over the place because we got all these houses in and no roads to take them on. Do we ever look at the infrastructure first? Do we have a plan to take care of all these houses that we're putting in? Or we just say, well, they'll work themselves out in the long run, which is, which is what I don't want to hear, but, through the Deputy Mayor?
Through the Deputy Mayor, I mean, Ian's report doesn't so much get into that, it focuses more on the approval side of things. Certainly, in the work that Tony's group does around staging and development, the intent is to try to create some sort of coherence and some planning in terms of when things are coming on stream so that we can align as best as we can with infrastructure. A lot of what you're talking really just boils down to a fiscal model of funding infrastructure to support development, and when does that funding come on stream, and when the infrastructure's in place, and, you know, when an area is built out so that you can actually go through and then finish off the roads and bring in some of the services, so that's a bit of a broader discussion.
Thank you. I really don't like the system we have now, and I think infrastructure should be more of a priority, because, I mean, just look at my area if you want. We're building probably 1,200 houses up there this year. We've got three or four big communities going on, planned, and the traffic right now is very heavy. We look at, long-term, we look at the Red Hill Valley Expressway. It's car-to-car from 4:00 to 7:30 every night and every morning. Is there plans long-term, or is anybody thinking of, do we have to expand the Lincoln, the Red Hill Valley for future development with the way it's moving ahead, Upper Stony Creek is moving ahead? We're going to have traffic jams already. Try to get on the QBW from the Red Hill Valley where it goes onto one lane, it's impossible. But we're not looking at long-term solutions for this, I guess, and I don't know if you want to comment on that or not, but it's just, it's frustrating in the long run that we, you know, Mr. Murray would like to comment, through the chair?
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Conley. Mr. Murray, would you like to respond?
Sure, it's you, Deputy Mayor, just certainly the Red Hill, the north-south link is designed for six lanes. The two additional lanes would go towards the middle, or in the median area, and so that was always part of the long-term strategy. There are some capacity challenges, I know, in the east-west, maybe Gary can speak more to that, but there is a point in time where we should be looking at the, you know, the combination of the traffic volumes that we're experiencing today, certainly in the projected growth that we see happening in the next five or 10 years, and ask yourself the question, is it time to start to think about widening in the middle on the north-south? So, good news is that all our structures are sized to accommodate that widening, so your bridges are designed that way. It's a matter of dropping the asphalt and putting up a different kind of protective barrier between the north and south lanes. Gary, on the Lincoln Alexander, just...
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, through you, Deputy Mayor. The link is capable of being expanded as well, all the way through to the 403. The, again, the structures are all designed, the overhead signs and the median work would have to be done, but again, it would be expanded to the median.
Thank you for the clarification. Counselor Conley, does that answer your questions?
Yeah, it does in general, because I knew, I already knew it could be expanded to six lanes. I'd like to see a timeframe, though, even if it's five years, even if it's 10 years, I'd like to see it on the plans, so that when it, it's not a surprise when it comes up that we're actually doing long-term planning and we visualize these roads being expanded at, you know, 2025 or 2021 or whenever it's going to be. So, just a comment.
Oh, Counselor Conley, I believe we have a response, if you'd like to hear it from Mr. Murray?
Oh, absolutely, I love responses.
Regarding timelines, Mr. Murray?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. We are in the midst of the five-year master transportation plan review, so I would expect that during that process, we'll be able to look at exactly what you're talking about and not surprise you and provide some recommendation as to what the horizon would be for widening those roads.
And that's coming when, through the Deputy?
We're out right now on that, doing consultation with the community, I would expect, in the next 12 months, we should have an answer on that strategy.
Thank you. And just the last one, technology. We are going to revisit the technology and try to, would that make it quicker to get things done, or would it make it more efficient? What's the prime goal of the technology change? Through the Deputy Mayor?
So, through the Deputy Mayor, there's a couple of things, and that's already well underway. We've been working on what's called the Amanda system for about a year now. This building and licensing have been using it, we're rolling out to planning and growth management, and it'll have a few benefits. It'll allow for easier document transfer and comment transfer and tracking, which I hope will actually speed up the process. Ultimately, we can get to the point of being able to do digital submissions, which will be, make things easier on the applicant's end. Eventually, I think we'll actually have a viewing dashboard where members of council, potentially even the public, can kind of see where applications are at in the process. I mean, those are some of the functions that I think, they're a little further out, but there's a lot that we can do with that. One of the things that I'm most excited actually about with the Amanda system, though, is it'll allow us to develop much more refined indicators and performance metrics than we can do right now with the systems we have right now.
When do you see this happening?
So, planning and growth management should have some of their processes, subdivision site plan, there's a couple of others in our, which ones, this summer, and then we'll be looking departmentally what we want as the next process is to load into the system.
Thank you, Counselor Conley. We have Counselors Ferguson, Marula, and Vanderbeek on the speakers list. Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Jason, thanks for bringing this report in today. I know it's not easy to stand at the podium and say, we're not, we may not be doing such a great job, but it's also important to say how we're going to fix it, and I think that's what you've done today, and I'm not here to question how you're going to fix it, because it's your department that does the work. I just know that we've been subject to a lot of criticism in the past for, you know, a perceived delay in development approvals. I think I've heard Chris Murray say regularly that, oh, he's left, that we are in a renaissance and we can't screw, got to make sure that we respond to investors that want to come to town, want to make things work properly. And I'm also was very impressed with the consultant that we've retained. I've known Ian, I'm hoping I'm embarrassing him by saying this, I've known you for decades, and you've got a lot of great hair to show with, though. And I've always known Ian, because I've dealt with a lot of city engineers over my career, to be a very practical person, and that's exactly what we need, is practical solutions. And so, I'm happy with the report, too, but once again, it's Jason and his staff that have to implement. My question to you, though, Jason, is, you talked about in your presentation that you're going to create KPIs, I think Counselor Conley touched on that. When do we see what your KPIs are going to be? Because I didn't see them today. And then how often will you be providing a report, either to planning and GIC, of how it's being measured? And a key one would be, you know, we know now how long it takes from the time a person applies for rezoning until a report gets to planning, and I think it's set out in the Act, if you don't do it by a specific period of time, the applicant can take a doctorate to the ONB, and they've been doing that. But it's on the, the applications for approval to proceed, and we don't measure that, and I know there's always issues, well, the developer didn't get back to us with the information we're looking for, but that's something I would be interested in seeing, and if we're delayed by the developer, that would be another KPI. How soon will we see your KPIs? And would you be reporting quarterly to us on that, or either to this committee, planning or Open for Business?
So, through the Deputy Mayor, so we took our first crack at that last summer with that first report card, where we reported on a couple of things, how long it took to get to site plan approval, draft plan of subdivision, there's a couple other sort of broad indicators in there, and we're just starting to update those numbers now to do a new report card, hopefully later this summer, early fall, and that, I would imagine that's something we'd want to do annually, and it's going to be, it's going to be a process of refinement, though, because right now, when I said that the indicators we have are fairly coarse, it's because it didn't speak to some of the things that you just mentioned. So, we can find the date that we received the application, we can find the date that we issued the approval. We can't yet provide great tracking for what happened in the interim. So, how long was it in our hands, how long was it in the applicant's hands? Those are really important numbers to tease up to really understand what's happening. So, that'll be, that's going to be a process of sort of constant refinement to those KPIs so they can start to tell really a true picture. Right now, as I said, when we do an updated report card, we'll get some more of those coarse numbers. Once we have the Amanda system up and running, then I hope we can get much more quickly identify some of the nuance in the story within the story behind some of those indicators.
Okay, and so, when would we start to see what those KPIs are going to look like? And who would you report that to?
So, through the Deputy Mayor, what we did with the report in the summer was, we first went to Open for Business Subcommittee and then brought it to, then brought it to council.
Okay, so it's going this summer to Open for Business?
Yes, and my expectation would be that each year, as you see those reports, they get more and more refined and they tell a more and more detailed story.
Okay, and the other one, I'm going to sound like a broken record on to you, Mr. Chairman, is the issue of the unsophisticated developer, you know, the doctor, the lawyer, the accountants, who are very good at their profession, but they walk into your counter and they get a long list of things that they need to do, they sigh a bit and go off and spend a lot of money getting necessary reports, come back, give it to you, and they think, now I can walk across a building, get the building permit, and then building is another big long list, and they find that very frustrating. I don't see how you're going to inform an applicant that there's two processes they have to go through and what can be expected when they come in and, first of all, work with planning, and then walk down the hall to Ed's group and find out, wow, there's another big long list, and they get frustrated by that and they're delighted, they think, how are you going to address that?
So, through the Deputy Mayor, Steve actually already brought in some, when people come in for site plan approval at the DRT process, sort of messaging at that point in time to say that there is still going to be the building permit process that you're going to have to go through at the end of the day. So, we've got that place now, and I think we'll see, you know, if that's working, can we be doing more to actually explain to people what that second process is going to look like? Because, yeah, that certainly was a key theme that came out of the last Open for Business Subcommittee.
Okay, and can they do that in tandem? Some of the building requests, I know you have to wait for planning approval for some of them, but is there a building list that could be provided to these, and I hate calling them unsophisticated developers, but they don't know the process, they only do it once in a lifetime, to say, here's what you can expect, building that you're asking for after you're finished with our list of your planning?
Deputy Mayor, I might see if Ed wants to respond to that in terms of what could be stated upfront at site plan approval process in terms of what may be required at the building permit stage.
Yes, through the Deputy Mayor. The building code is a complex document. In fact, it's two binders, it's about this thick each binder, and the building code requires an applicant to have a licensed, design professional license by the province to do the work. That's their role. So, whether it's fire accident or egress or fire separations, it's a complex matter. We can tell that upfront, but the details are all to do with initial occupancy. The occupancy requires different requirements, and that's the difficult part for us.
So, you're telling me now that the only thing they have to do is hire a professional, the professional knows exactly what you're looking for, and that professional comes in and gives you an application that they're not going to be asked to provide five more studies or three more reports?
So, we review the professional's work, and that's what they're being paid to do, and that's where our role comes in, to review that work. And often, it does in fact require some further upgrades to the work that's being submitted.
Okay, so it sounds like the simple answer is get yourself out, hire a professional to start the detailed design work in tandem with the planning approvals?
That, of course, is always helpful.
Okay, I think we're still going to have issues in that area, but that's a reasonable answer. And, Mr. Chairman, I also support the Mayor's recommendation that we also include in resolution include the two associations, because they're the ones that we hear from as our members, and it'd be nice to have one message from the home builders and from the Chamber of Commerce to be able to help us better stick to this. So, I'd be happy to second the Mayor's amendment to that.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm hearing chambers, 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 yeah. Okay, excellent. We have Counselors Marula, followed by Vanderbeek. Counselor Marula, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just quickly, thanks very much, Jason, for the presentation, which I believe is thorough, and it sounds all great, and the problem, I think, we're all emphasizing here today, is the difference between the actual versus perceived problems, and a lot of the problems seem to be systemic and longstanding, and how we measure the improvement going forward. I look at a lot of the complaints that I've received over the years, and clearly, there are three types, I believe, of a customer that we deal with. We deal with a large... We deal with the large, regular customer, the medium sized, regular customer, and then the one offs, the average resident who comes in, is doing an addition or is expanding or renovating. And I find that in looking at those three categories, through you, Mr Chairman, is that we're dealing with basically everyone the same way. And that, it just, and that the intimidation factor of the average person coming in to go through this process is through the roof. I personally am going through it, and I was intimidated by the process. So I can only imagine what the average resident is feeling. So through you, Mr Chairman, if throughout this process and implementing this plan, I think we need to expand upon the frequent flyers versus that of the average citizen, firstly. And secondly, and how we can expedite that process. So can you just elaborate on how this plan might in essence enable that to come to fruition?
Mr Thorn, an elaboration please?
Yeah, through the deputy mayor, I think, I think that observation's bang on, those are the kinds of folks who come through the, that come through the door. And I think as you look at Ian's report, they tend to face different issues. So usually the smaller, you know, less sophisticated, the people only come in once in a lifetime or once in a while, tend to more have issues at the building permit stage. That tends to be more of the kinds of, or the board business licensing tends to be where they're running into more issues. The bigger, the bigger applications tend to be more planning, development, engineering is the process that they encounter. So I think you're right, and I think what you've, what you've talked about is, is one of the reasons for trying to push more, more decision making, more accountability closer to the front lines where they can actually sort of deal one on one with the applicant and provide that extra value added support. To get to that point is where we've got to invest pretty heavily in the people who are part of our process. And that's, that's why the strong emphasis on people that you see in Ian's report, and why the strong emphasis in terms of where we're going to be spending a fair bit of our efforts on training and development. Because it is that first interaction that, you're right, can, can be very intimidating for some people, can be extremely confusing for some people. And, and that's, I think, where we can make some real positive difference, where we can sort of empower and build up the skills and capacity of that frontline staff to be able to provide that sort of support right at the beginning.
And through you, Mr Chairman, we spoke about this a few weeks or months ago, surrounding the ownership of the customer or the client or the file, and how it would be assigned to one individual and they would see it from beginning to end. Can you elaborate on that process and how, how we're going to get to that point?
So through the deputy mayor, so that's the, you know, on a day to day basis, that's typically the responsibility of the planner to provide that kind of support through the process, but the role of the business facilitation unit is really to provide that kind of level of customer service, which in the past has been, you know, with a couple of people that we've had, has been reserved for the, you know, the big players, that's how we deliver the big maple leaves and the canned a breads and those kinds of projects. The Royal cannot would have a business facilitation support that would take them through from beginning to end. With the enhancements that council approved in this budget, we're looking to add the two individuals, one who would specifically work with small businesses and one with rural businesses, who are, which are two of the areas where we probably most encounter that intimidation factor, and that, you know, people who sort of run into the complexity of the process and need a bit of extra help.
And through you, Mr Chairman, Jason, I'm looking at all the complaints and understanding that if you go to any city, I presume in Ontario, you're going to have people complaining about the process. A lot of it were directed to do through legislation. But is there any comparative data related to other municipalities on measurables that can rank the process and where we, where we basically fall accordingly?
Just through the deputy mayor, that's, I mean, there's not a lot that we can look to. Like I said earlier to another question, you know, in talking to some of my colleagues, there is, you know, no one has, I think, a really great system of tracking and reporting and benchmarking. And certainly comparators become very differently because everybody does things a little bit differently. What, what site plan approval means in Hamilton might be different than what it means in the municipality, where we might more of a conditional approval, they might have more of an unconditional approval, it becomes very difficult to compare. So with the indicators we want to develop, I hope we can at least be able to report how we're improving within our own corporation, within our own process. It is going to be hard to benchmark against other municipalities.
And lastly, through you, Mr Chairman, with respect to exit interviews or assessments of how the client feels the process on each application has, has basically come from beginning to end, has any thought been given regarding any exit type of interviews or surveys per se?
So through the deputy mayor, it actually did come up actually at the first open for business subcommittee meeting of the new, of the new council about, about a month ago. It's done sort of a little bit ad hoc right now, but certainly that is one area that I think is worth looking into.
So it's something that will be implemented accordingly?
Yes, yeah.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman, and thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much, councillor Marula. We have councillor Vanderbeek.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I would just like to thank Ian Neville and Chris Murray and Jerry Davis and you for the work you've done on this, because it is, it is, it is a great start, and it is so important to the success of continuing the momentum going forward for Hamilton. And as councillor Ferguson said, we don't want to mess that up. So having this, having this process worked through is going to be, is going to be, is going to be very important to what we do going forward. A couple of my questions have already been answered, but I would like to say that I, like someone else, I'm not sure whether it was councillor Marula or councillor Ferguson, I read this report too, and it didn't appear to me that there was very much emphasis, and it may just have been the way it was written, on the small independent builder and the situations they run into. And so I heard your answer, and I'm good with that, but I am wondering about something that councillor Ferguson started to talk about. And that is the problems that I hear about when people bring in their plans, they go to the pre-consultation meeting, they go away with a list, they come with their list, they bring everything they need, they've got professionals often, even the independent people have to have an architect or engineer in most cases. And only to be told that they, they've, after 21 days, that they have, you know, this other list of things they need, reports or revisions to the plan, and then they go away and they do that, and they bring it back, and then it's another 21 days, and then they're told they need more revisions. So I'm really happy to see that there's going to be some tracking here, some performance tracking, some, how long is it taking? I'd like to know if you think that's going to identify sort of where those bottlenecks are, and, and I'd just like to elaborate, I'd like you to elaborate on something you said about keeping track of whether it's the developer or small builder or who it is that's, that's causing delays in real time.
So through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I'll give you an example, and it's something that Tony's actually started doing in his shop, which I think is going to be very revealing. So, so for example, he's tracking sort of when, when an engineering submission comes in, when the comments go out, when the second engineering submission comes in, when comments go out. Because often what we'll hear, what you'll hear is, you know, I submitted my application 18 months ago, 19, 20 months ago. What's not necessarily known is, okay, how many of those in 18, 19, 20 months was it in our hands versus when it was out in the applicant's hands? So we'll be able to tell that story a bit more. And the other thing that Tony's been doing is, you know, structuring comments on engineering submissions, so it's clear, you know, when you're on your second submission, well, what are the things that actually weren't fixed from the first submission? So there's that set of comments. What has newly arisen because of whatever changes were made, new issues will sometimes arise? And what maybe we missed in the first submission, so that it's clear the comments that are coming back. And the goal should certainly be that there should be none on that first category of things that just weren't changed from the first submission, and there should be none on that third category of things that we missed. But if we aren't sorting and presenting our comments in that way, we can't have that discussion. So I think some of the things that Tony's doing is, will deal with, starts to answer some of the questions that you're asking. And I think on, you talk about building permits, you know, one of the things that Ed's tracking is, you know, not only how long does it take us to go from submission to, to comments, but how many times are they coming back? So is it having to come, because I've heard the same thing, that, you know, after your 21 days, you get comments, but if you had to come back and if it goes through many cycles, and then same sort of thing, is it, you know, because very reasonably, as you address certain issues, new issues can arise. So inevitably, there is going to be some of that back and forth. But, but our goal is to minimize the number of times you're coming back through the process.
Good. I think that's all that's left of the questions that I had here. I would also like to voice my support for the Hamilton-Holton Home Builders Association being part of the open for business and the three chambers, because they do have valuable information to share, and I think it's good to have them at the table. So thank you very much, Mr Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Jason.
Thank you, councillor Vanderbeek. We have councillor Pursuta followed by councillor Johnson. Councillor Pursuta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Green. Mr Thorn, I've got a few questions, maybe even for Mr Neville, but methodology in here within the report, and it talks about 54 staff members that were interviewed, 22 developers, builders and contractors, and then I go look over to the right hand side, four small business, four small businesses. Through the process, did we reach out to them or did they come to us, let's say the builders or the small business? Because, you know, we talk about small businesses on the table here all the time with the Hamilton, that's who builds cities and towns and the country, small business. And I hear time and time again, I'm actually getting tired of hearing about a canned a bread and maple leaf meats. Yes, it brought a lot of jobs, and staff pulled all the, all the strings to get them going, and why don't we do that for the small business too? My feeling and my understanding is through the process, when we did canned meats and maple leaf, and what we did with them was we worked with them, we didn't give them a little bit of information and tell them to come back, we followed them right through it, knowing that we had a big fish on the line. That's the way of putting it. So what I'm getting at here, did you reach out to the small businesses or Mr Neville, or did they come to you? And who they might have been? Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, please.
So through the deputy mayor, I can start that off, and Ian might want to add to it. So I know that we first brought in Ian, I think what we told him was we were going to want him to do 25 interviews. And, and, you know, I know I directed him to, to some individuals who I, who I thought would be good to speak to. From there, he dealt with a lot of referrals, so he'd speak to one individual, suggested you should speak to another. I know councillors referred them, Ian, to certain interviewees, and that's how the number 25 grew to a little over 100 by the end of the process. So I don't know, Ian, do you want to speak in terms of, we didn't actually in the report identify the individuals, because it was made clear that these would be confidential interviews, so we didn't provide a list of who those small business were, who those staff were that were spoken to.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Some of the small business that we spoke to came as a result of me interviewing some of the councillors who in turn suggested I meet with those individuals. I made an effort to do so, in some cases, we didn't have time to finish it. But I think it's important to understand, and I've emphasized this with Mr Thorn, this is only phase one. Phase two, as you go forward, yes, you can still interview people, and it's important to do that, because obviously, this upfront phase one process had a limited time span and it was touching the surface, but it gave us some insight and the commonality of the issues faced by all stakeholders, not only the small businessmen, the big businessmen or developers, as well as staff. And it's those common elements that the report has basically focused on. But again, in terms of the question posed in terms of more small businesses, yes, I would suggest personally that, you know, you include those individuals in follow up interviews. This is, this is not going to happen overnight, it'll take some time, but it's an ongoing process as I see it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Does that answer your question, councillor Pursuta?
One of them, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Okay, and the floor is still yours.
Okay, thank you. So even within our own departments here, and I can give an example, we had the Linden Library, and we get the planning and the building department, and they get going at one another and trying to resolve issues. Took a long time to get a library in Linden. Have a nice ring in Filton, it's back and forth, and I'm not going to mention any names here, what departments, but I have staff come to me and blame this department for things dragging, and that one blames that department. Through all this process, are they going to start working, departments going to start working closer together to resolve issues? Are we still going to have some of this going on? I see that, I hear it, I know what's going on. No names, I promise no names are coming out of this, but it's happening, even as of today.
So through the deputy mayor, yeah, that's absolutely intent, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, at the staff level, the SMT working group that has myself and Chris and Jerry on it and Mike is overseeing this, so it's not just, you know, in the first round of open for business, it was more PED focused, now we're taking that holistic corporate focus on everybody who's got their finger in the approvals process should be part of this. I know Ian did talk about looking at how, what are the communications channels between divisions across departments? He talked about possibly trying to look at MOU, service level agreements, those sorts of things, in order to, to improve some of that communication going back and forward. So, yeah, absolutely, that's part of it.
And just, Deputy Mayor Green, I'm just trying to make the point that even within our own organization, we have these battles going back and forth. So, you know, you can understand, people come from the outside, particularly the smaller business people or even homeowners coming in and having to deal with it. And if we can't do it on our own down here, I'd expect them to do it. So, and as I said, once again, I'm not picking on canned a bread or maple leaf, but we led them by the hand, and that's what we should be doing. I think if we work closely, more closely with people coming in, small business, I don't care if it's in town here, in the urban, suburban, or in the rural, farmers, that if we work more closely, I can guarantee we'll be spending less time around the table and on the computer, handing it back and forth, back and forth. And I'd love to go in camera and have some discussion, but I'm not going to do that. I want to go home and plant some corn and soybeans today, I had to stay here for this one down here. But I'm frustrated by the process and what's happening here, and I've got probably nine projects on the go that are being held up by certain staff members. So hopefully this process, we continue, Mr Neville, thank for your work on this, Mr Murray and Mr Thorn, but let's keep going, let's get this right, let's be smarter about business and moving forward with the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have councillor Brenda Johnson.
Thank you. And, Mr Neville, great last name. My husband wouldn't let me keep mine, and just for the record, this is no relative of mine, but still, great last name. And Neil, I guess we're going to have to have you and your staff work on every application going forward because it seems to work that way. But on that, on that vein, through you to Jason, when, when our staff goes after an application to get it to work and get it moving, it's not just the building, and it's not just the planning, it's also PW that needs to be involved. It's, it's, it's little bits and pieces, you need traffic, you need to know where the curbs need to be cut. So is that also part of this scenario that you're presenting?
Yeah, so through the deputy mayor, so Ian was actually jointly retained by PED and PW, and the report before you is from both Jerry and I, Jerry unfortunately couldn't be here today. But the scope and direction that we gave to Ian was he's looking at a process, he's not looking at a division or a department, he's looking at a process, and, you know, what I'm saying, what I asked him sort of the very beginning was to follow his nose. So follow his nose wherever that took him in terms of the questions he needed to ask and people he needed to speak to.
Thank you very much for that. As you know, the rural zoning is coming forward in the, in the summer. I've had both a well-known developer and an average Joe come to me in the last 48 hours to say that both their applications have to be all completely revised because of this new rural zoning. It's my understanding that it's not been passed yet, correct?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. So this is from, from both of your departments that have said to the message to the average Joe and to the well-known developer that we, they cannot accept the plans that they have in front of them because of the new rural zoning. And if it's not in effect yet, how is it that we're enforcing it?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, I'd have to look into the specifics of that.
Okay, so we'll carry that, thank you. And on that vein, how do we engage the average Joe? I keep hearing small businesses, I keep hearing about the big guys, but the average Joe, do we have any follow up with them? I know we've got, we're doing some tracking, but is there any follow up with them that just, here's your, here's your application for your permit, and here's a survey to say, here, how's things going? Do we have anything in our, in our chest of, of, yeah, do we have anything like that that engages the average citizen? Through you or to Ian or Jason?
I can start through the deputy mayor. We do have, I mean, we've looked at, you know, there's various sort of information materials that try to describe what the process is. The issue came up earlier in the questioning around some sort of exit interview or post application survey, which we haven't done on a formal basis, but certainly has come up as a suggestion as something that we should be doing.
Great. And just to put this out there, we have a planning department that's wonderful at planning areas to say, you know, here's where the parks are going to be, here's where the low density, high density, the whole bit. And the building code department comes in and goes, whoa, you can't do it that way and goes, whoa, you can't do it that way, because, you know, septic systems are involved the whole bit. So, I appreciate the expertise of both, and I'm glad to hear that they're going to be coming together more often. I think it's going to eliminate a lot more frustrations from Ed's group and your group, so I'm really excited to hear about this and listening to further recommendations that Ian has, and your groups working together on this with the PW group. So, thank you for your answers, and I'm waiting to hear back from the rule zoning.
Okay, we have on the first-time speakers list, Councilor Partridge, and on the second-time speakers list, Councilor Farr. Councilor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and great questions around the table, and I very much appreciate it. Jason, I'm Vice Chair of the Open for Business Subcommittee, so we've had lots of conversations, along with Councilor Pearson, who is the Chair. The concern I have, and again, I'm coming back to small business, and I agree with the previous comments, that we, at some point in time, need to have someone to go through the process with them, especially when they're having difficulties. I would say I spend 70 to 80% of my time helping with zoning issues, planning issues, building issues, you know, just architectural, just trying to maneuver the process, and I'm the one, and I think there's lots of other councillors around the table, that ends up trying to do that hand-holding to get them through. The challenge, and you've recognized it with small businesses, is they're, you know, these folks, they're good at their business, and they need to make money. They want to get their business open, so they can make money, so they can pay their bills. And instead, many times, they're, you know, six, seven, eight months, which they never counted on, having to just try and maneuver our process. But my question through you, Deputy Mayor, I heard the answer to Councilor Ferguson, when he talked about, you know, at some point in time, they need to hire a professional, whether it be an architect or an engineer, and I heard the response, which I appreciated from Ed, but it made it sound very, very simple, and it's not. And so, my concern, and I've had to deal with lots of small businesses, which, you know, some of them ended up closing and going out of business, because they were broke, they just couldn't do it, but they needed to have someone with a BCIN designation. When I asked staff, where can they get that information, or, you know, can we recommend some folks to them? Oh, no, 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 we can't do that. I said, okay, where do I find that information? Well, go to the Ministry of Labor's website, I believe it was, which I did, and I couldn't access, because you needed to have a code or something to get into that list of people within the province that have that designation. So, how are we going to be able to help a small business person who needs to come in, is given a list, is following a process, they think they're doing everything right, but quite honestly, it's not their area of expertise, and they need someone to help them? How are we going to help them?
Through the Deputy Mayor, I can offer a couple responses to that. I mean, the idea of the small business facilitators is in part to do with some of those issues. I know the building also has served the pre-consultation process, where you can come in and you can ask some questions before you get started, and they're certainly encouraged to do that. And, I mean, I can tell, we were just discussing one the other day, in, it was in Ward 3, I believe it was, and somebody who sort of started to work without a permit, somebody complained, we go out, and then we have to sort of say, here's what we have to do in terms of code compliance, and there's very good reasons for that code compliance. And I know that sometimes that comes off as sounding very, very much like throwing red tape at them, but, you know, I think what can't be lost in all of this is that, you know, we, as staff, do a very important responsibility in terms of upholding public health and safety, and that's the reasoning behind, you know, the policies that we're trying to enforce and put in place. So, I know I've been in a lot of those meetings where, you know, people are frustrated and concerned, but we also have to make sure that, you know, there's certain rules that can't be bent, and that can't be broken. So, I know sometimes, you know, people just kind of run into that, which is why we say, you know, come in and talk to us early, do the pre-consultation, and my hope is that the business facilitators will sort of be able to stay with that person then through the process, and make it as simple, as easy as it can, but it is a complex process.
Okay, and, I mean, you know, I agree with you 100%. You know, our staff should never be put in a position where they're risking their designation, or, you know, stepping out of their boundaries of authority. But I'm still going to come back to this program, as far as I am concerned, for this program to work, for this process to be jigged, we need to find a way to work with the small businesses, which, quite frankly, that's what drives the economy in this city. And we need to make sure that that part of the process is made easier. You know, and just one final comment, Mr. Deputy Mayor, even having gone through that with, you know, making sure the small business person that I've been dealing with, sometimes when they end up finding someone that has a BCIN, and apparently there's different levels of that, it's not my world either, so, you know, I'm not aware, but, you know, they go through that, they hire the person, they do the floor plan, they understand, and yeah, they own designation, what to mean, $2,000, and, you know, they can't afford it, they can't afford it. So, I guess my message is, and it's been said around the table a couple of times, what's broken is how we work with small business. That's what needs to be fixed. There needs to be a process that can help them. And so, I would just, you know, I would say, that's not just my opinion, but it's certainly what I'm hearing from my residents, and I'm hearing it from other businesses and other wards, and other councillors, so, you know, that's something that absolutely we need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Partridge. We have on the first-time speakers list, Mayor Eisenberger. Oh, you went through this already, okay? We have Councilor Farr, my apologies, Councilor Farr.
I was going to move to receive the presentation, and then I'd be honored to move the recommendation and be an E12, if we're pushing that up.
We have still the motion, and then second-time speakers list, do we have to?
Bit of a spirited defense of our staff here, because we don't have everything wrong. So, you know, it's starting to sound like we're all wrong, and everyone else is all right, and, you know, I don't think that's where we're at. We have things to fix, clearly. I don't think we're going to put ourselves and our staff in a position to be the planners and the architects for projects that are coming forward. We shouldn't get into that territory. What we should do is have a process that facilitates and has the applicants understand exactly what their needs are, what we need from them, what rules that apply, and to make sure that it's a predictable process, so that they can actually facilitate their project as quickly as possible. Whenever someone asks me, I've got this project, or I want to do an addition, or I want to do X, Y, Z, the first thing I do is talk to a good planner, and they understand what the process is, you know, the money that you will spend, small as it is, in fact, the first discussion you would have with a good planner probably doesn't cost you anything. The next step would cost you a little bit, but doing that and getting good advice at the very beginning, someone that understands the process as it is, is going to save them a ton of money, small business or otherwise, you know, going forward. So, I know it's starting to sound like we're going to be planners and architects on behalf of, you know, all the projects that are coming at us. I don't think we ought to infer that in any way, shape, or form, but we need to make sure is that our process is as good as it can be, notwithstanding the hoops and hurdles that we have to face in terms of other regulations that we're also adhering to. So, I don't want to leave this issue, I think it's an important issue, I think it's priority number two, get this process right. And we're on a path to making some significant changes, but we don't have everything all wrong, either. So, let's not kind of characterize this as, we've been totally failing in the entire process, we haven't been, but there are a lot of areas that we need to make significant changes in and improvements in, including technology, including manpower, and including a welcoming environment that actually receives those applications with open arms, as opposed to some resistance in terms of, here comes another one. So, change is afoot, and I'm hopeful that we support the effort and change, and that we can look at ways in terms of how we can help facilitate, when we get those questions from developers out there, because, you know, I hear it, too. I get it everywhere I go, and I get the complaints, and sometimes, when you look a little deeper, you get to understand that, well, they didn't provide all the information, or they didn't necessarily have a full and complete application, and often, there are mitigating issues that come out of all of this. The hope is that all of those mitigating issues go away, when we actually facilitate a process that actually is as clear and thorough as it can be right at the very beginning, and hopefully, people will go forward and get good advice while we're at it. So, I would thank everyone for the great questions. I mean, I think tracking and all the questions about making sure that we're following up, and making sure that we're making progress, and reporting back is exactly what needs to happen, and we need to stay on top of this issue until we believe at some point we get it right. And benchmarking, by the way, you know, I mean, there is one fundamental benchmark, is how long does it take to put an application process through a community? That's a benchmark that is pretty evident and available. I think it's two years in Toronto to get any application through. Jason, you might have more information on that. What's the number in Hamilton in terms of generalities? I think there's, we have a benchmark number in terms of months or time that it takes, the last I heard, it was on a complex application, eight months, something in that order. Do we have a number, or do we have any benchmark on what the average application timeframe is? Sorry?
Through Deputy Mayor, we have a couple, so I'm trying to remember from the report card that was sent out last year, I think, look to Bill or Steve, either of them have the number, in terms of plans of subdivision, I thought it was, that was the longest one. I think we were asked 300 days or something like that. Site plans, we were in the four to six weeks, was what we usually tell people from when they actually come in the door, to when they can get their conditional site plan approval. So, it's different depending on the application, but like I said, those are, you know, to me, those aren't indicators yet that we can take to the bank, because there's, we don't yet have the specific tracking to really have firm numbers.
Agreed, but it's an early indicator. I mean, in terms of comparing to other municipalities, I think, you know, if you compare to Toronto, I know Toronto is two years plus for any application, it's just a long, arduous process, there's much to do. I don't think we're anywhere near that category, so our improvements can only improve upon what we're already doing well, and hopefully, correct the things that we aren't. So, I thank everyone for the effort, and I'll put forward a motion after, whenever that is.
Second-time speakers list, we have Councilor Whitehead.
The dovetail on that, I mean, we've done extraordinary on some of the major, very complex investments in this community by pulling a team together and addressing them and fast-tracking that, so we've got a reputation doing that, and we heard very strong and very complimentary remarks from Maple Leaf in regards to that course of action, so I just want to highlight, there's a lot of good stuff here. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilor Whitehead, Mr. Mayor, spirited defense. We also have on the floor a motion.
So, the Clerk, Madam Stephanie, has advised that the delegate is speaking to this, so I'll just move to receive, and then later you come back, I'd be happy to move eight, 12, at the appropriate time.
It is a motion to receive the presentation, moved by Councilor Farr, seconded by Councilor Pearson, all those in favor, carried. I would also like to bring to attention the inequity of that positioning of that microphone. We've been talking about an adjustable microphone for some time, and it's never more apparent than it is today, so thank you for your presentation. We've got to have equity, equity not equality, councillor. So, we have, actually, item 4.1, we'll now be addressing, I really appreciate the patience of Ms. Suzanne Mammel of the Hamilton-Halden Home Builders Association, I apologize for missing you earlier. Perhaps this was an opportunity to hear some points brought about by presentation. Ms. Mammel, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I've actually completely rewritten this while I was up there, so it's actually probably a good thing that you've allowed me to wait and speak at the end. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm Suzanne Mammel, I'm the Executive Officer at the Hamilton-Halden Home Builders Association. I did promise Chris Murray and Jason Thorne that we would not always come here with big ass complaints, so I'm here today really in support of this on behalf of our association. We'd like to applaud staff and all those involved in deciding that an in-depth review of the process, an approach taken to development in Hamilton was necessary. We're fully supportive of the report, and we truly hope that the information and recommendations in it provides, or is used to the best of the city's ability to achieve a streamlined approach that balances efficiency and cost-effectiveness with the crucial role of guarding public safety and good city planning. I'd like to take a minute to talk about our industry in general. Contrary to popular belief, the biggest employer in our area is not the university, it's not healthcare, it's not any one big industry. In fact, it's residential construction and renovation industry that employs over 47,000 people in the Hamilton and Halden areas. And as discussed here today, if you pair that with the growth our city is expected to accommodate in the coming years, it is imperative that we ensure that Hamilton is set to meet and embrace that growth. And it's just good financial planning on the part of the city. One aspect of the report that really wasn't talked today is some interesting statistics that were included in the report that illustrate the annual lost economic benefit from not achieving housing targets set by the city's own grid program and the provincial growth plan. I'm just going to list them off for you. 494 million in lost tax assessment, 750,000 in annual net revenue, 38.5 million annually in development charges, and 3,400 and change person, people, years of employment. Those numbers are so important to our city. At a time when budgets are difficult to manage, it only seems appropriate that we put a lot of effort into this, because it seems to me an easy way to make up those. Earlier, somebody asked if our industry is able to meet some of the targets that were included in the report. We've long talked about a number of 3,000-plus units that our members, or the industry in general, could build. The reality is, is our members do build more than what we build in Hamilton. They go elsewhere, though, they build in Burlington, they move to Cambridge, they go to Niagara. So, they do that to meet their own corporate targets, so it would be easy enough for us to achieve that if there was land available, and the streamlined process is in place to build more here. Our association is fully supportive of this endeavor as a whole. I can't stress enough how crucial it is for all of us that the work not stops up here with this report, that we work together to achieve a definitive action plan, to set in place those items necessary to achieve a streamlined process, provide the technology and training required for fully functioning departments. I'm pleased to hear some of the opinions discussed here today. We'd be happy to work with the city in any initiative such as Open for Business, sitting on that Subcommittee, the newly restructured Liaison Committee, really, any opportunity for us to work together with you in a transparent and open manner to work together through this would be welcomed by us. Most importantly, working together will help address one big issue in the report, and that is culture and attitude toward the development industry. We hope that you all agree that the city being truly open for business and ensuring a how-can-we-help-you-work-together attitude that spans staff and council and the private industry are key goals to the city. We welcome any opportunity to work with you in this regard, and looking forward to helping you meet your growth targets and creating a great city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Councilor Whitehead, followed by Councilor Ferguson, on speakers? No, Councilor Whitehead, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much for coming forward and supporting what is taking place. So, as you can see, we're doing whatever we can to streamline the processes and make it simpler and more cost-efficient. The question I have, and I don't know what the terms are for, not all builders belong to the Hamilton Home Builders, is that correct?
Correct.
So, is it a volunteer-based, membership-based organization?
Correct.
There's been a number in the last year, last number of years, and in some cases, I don't think they're really with the home builders, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's been a number of developers that, for whatever reason, have chosen to bump everything up to the Interior Municipal Board without going through a democratic process in regards to timelines. What kind of discussion is taking place? Has there been any discussions taking place with the home builders in that approach?
Wow, that's a loaded question. Okay, so, developers appeal to the OMB on a number, variety of issues, and those aren't necessarily systematic, they could be for specifics associated to an application, and so I'm sort of putting my old hat on, so for 20 years, I was a development consultant. You know, the reasons to go to OMB could be timelines, but that's only one issue. The reality is, is that time is money, and so, there is, there are developers out there, I will acknowledge it, members and non-members alike, who look at the process and say, there's statutory timelines, and when they're exceeded, I'm going to the OMB, because that gets me my answers faster. I would hope that a process like this goes a long way to resolving those issues, I can't promise it will, but a more streamlined process is certainly one thing. You'll always have other issues, it could be a technical issue or something that results in somebody going to the OMB, but this, I think, will go a long way to resolving that for members and non-members alike.
And the reason I ask the question is that, when I meet with staff, even though there's that statutory timeframe where judicially, I guess, the developer has the right to make that application in the Interior Municipal Board, far too often, we're finding that it's becoming more of a tool to avoid the democratic process than it really has anything to do with the timing of reports being completed. And we're doing our part in regards to streamlining the processes. I guess the question is, and you're not a regulatory body, you're a volunteer body, but I would hope that there's discussion amongst many of your members, that we're doing our part, hopefully, we will have more developers avoiding the application in the Interior Municipal Board, based just on that statutory thing, if in good faith, the city's doing whatever they can to address that issue.
Yeah, I can certainly take that back to our members. I mean, frankly, we meet with our members once a month on this, we meet with the city staff, Jason mentioned, our Liaison Committee, and we can talk about it there, too, so that it's something that's an open discussion, so staff's there, we're there, and we can have that chat.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilor Farr, you have a?
I've moved to receive.
Seconded, all those in favor, carried, and Mr. Mayor?
I'll move eight, 12, unless you wanted to.
I'll move eight, twelve and less, you wanted to.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll move eight, twelve and seconded by Counsel... That's the recommendations A and B with respect to this issue.
Mr. Chairman, may I just get clarification, the committee does not wish to move in closed session on this item at all? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, we have a move and seconder? Any questions? All those in favor?
Carried.
Any opposed? She's carried. Fred?
Thank you very much. You're hot.
So we have a seconder?
Moved and seconded by Counsel Partridge to waive the rules to allow for a motion regarding that very issue, so.
Okay, we have a...
Carried.
Thank you. And on that issue, the bottom line is that we include the Hamilton-Halton Home Builders Association in the subcommittee as non-voting members but participants, as well as the Hamilton Chamber, Flamboro Chamber, and the Stony Creek Chamber. It doesn't say that in that direct way, but it does, that was the intent, that all three chambers would be included in the committee as well.
Counsel?
And that was seconded by Counsel Partridge.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Carried.
Counsel Partridge, sir?
Yeah, before we vote on it, I just want to make, just want to make a couple of comments, and I want to thank Mayor Eisenberger for his leadership in bringing forward this motion, particularly to include the Halton-Hamilton Home Builders Association, and as he's clarified, there are three separate chambers, the Hamilton Chamber, the Flamboro Chamber, and the Stony Creek Chamber, so I was very pleased to second this motion, knowing that a representative from each one would be invited to the open-for-business subcommittee and attend the table. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, can I see you for a second?
Carried.
Okay.
Ms. Chair, could I, a quick question, I know a lot of people who have been here for the Ockmark issue, and I don't know what the intent is, but I, can you still be here? I don't, I'm not sure, Jeremy Freiberger's here, others were here earlier. Is that an issue we can deal with sooner rather than later, rather than having those folks, because I don't think there's other issues here that are occupying any members of the public on, other than that. So I'm just suggesting that we move that one up and deal with it now, and then move on to the rest.
So we're, the request is to move eight point eleven now?
Yep.
And we have a motion seconded by Counsel Farrar?
May I, on the motion, I'm happy to second it, may I humbly and respectfully suggest, I was going to suggest that we speak to the Ward Counselor and get him back in here, but maybe we could have a 10-minute recess and then come back with the agenda and start with eight eleven in 10 minutes?
Okay, I'm...
Just so we can gather up more folks, too.
So let's have a 10-minute break and then we'll reconvene, like I say, 10:50, say, 12:45.
With eight eleven and move and seconded by...
Yes.
Carried.
Thank you.
Be good to go? We have quorum, okay ladies and gentlemen if we could please come to call this meeting back to order, we have quorum and still a healthy amount of items on the list. So we are currently at item 8.11, the Akmar request for proposals. We'll go back to, we have, oh, so are we moving in seconding, is that what we're doing?
No.
Okay, so on the speakers list, we have Whitehead, Ferguson, and Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I guess this has been a long journey and road in regards to Akmar and finding some permanency in regards to ownership and bringing it up to its original historic standard. There was, RFP put out, my understanding, two bidders, friends of Akmar and I believe Cobalt. Could I get that verified through staff, through the chair?
Through the chair, that is correct, yeah.
Now, is my understanding that, the reason, this report actually is kind of ironic because I'm looking at it and it says, this report is sale of Akbur State for adaptive reuse, yet it's not a report on what happened with the RFP process. So can I just help, help me understand, because in this report, I don't see any information that gives me any comfort level and what and how the decision was arrived at.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes, the Deputy Mayor, so we did through an information update to council a few weeks ago, provided some detail on the results of the RFP process. And the two proposals that we did receive didn't score sufficiently just to make it past the first stage of that process, so we spoke to that in the information update, and then in that information update suggested we'd be coming back to council with a plan for going forward. So this report is really looking, focused on what is that plan going forward.
Okay, so that was a very high level, if I remember, information report that didn't give a lot of detail. So can you, for the purposes of, I guess we can now speak publicly on those proposals, can we not?
Can we go to...
Yes, I believe we can, we can speak on those two proposals. The two proposals were quite different, coming from two different approaches. The one was focused, and having said that, they were both looking at a sort of a multipurpose and multi-phase development process. The scoring had to do with the level of detail and specificity in the proposal, rather than the specifics of the actual use being inappropriate or less than appropriate.
Okay, so my understanding though, through that information report, there was a commitment to sit down with both proponents to explain the shortfalls of their RFP.
Through you Deputy Mayor, so it is in the procurement process, there is always that option, that if the, if the bidders want to come back and request a meeting, I have to check, look to procurement to see if they actually had made a request to do that. I don't believe there was, but...
Okay, and again, it's just order of things. I'm a bit concerned that we already have a report here to take next steps. When we haven't sat down with the original proponents, it took time of their schedule to put forward our P, we haven't closed the door on that discussion and briefing and feedback, and we're already entertaining another option, so I guess I'm confused about timing.
For you, Mr. Chair, both proponents were offered and given a debriefing on their proposal, and that was the end of the process. Neither one of them chose to enact Policy 18, which is the vendor complaint resolution clause.
Okay, so that's the clarification I'm looking for. So when I look at this particular report in regards to the potential sale, I see a number of clauses which, you know, if we're going to try and protect the spirit and intent of all the easements and the heritage component are pretty admirable. I guess the piece that isn't there is the fact that for whatever reason, whatever organization comes forward to purchase it, that if they no longer feel the need or no longer want to hold on to that property, there's no language in here that says that we have first right of refusal, meaning that before they can just go out nilly and put it out to the open market themselves, that the city would get first option to say no, and I don't see that language in here.
Staff or anybody who'd like to take that on?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. As part of the appendix B to the report in number five guarantees, if the purchaser fails to comply with the conditions, then the city shall have the option to repurchase the property and receive a conveyance of it, free of all, clear of all charges and encumbrances.
Okay, and I read that, and I didn't, maybe this is a question you ask legal, but that doesn't, they could be meeting at all and then decide at some point that they're going to dispose of the asset.
Be good to go? We have quorum. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we could please come to call this meeting back to order. We have quorum and still a healthy amount of items on the list. So we are currently at item 8.11, the Akmar request for proposals. We'll go back to, we have, oh, so are we moving in seconding? Is that what we're doing?
No.
Okay, so on the speaker's list, we have Whitehead, Ferguson, and Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I guess this has been a long journey and road in regards to Akmar and finding some permanency in regards to ownership and bringing it up to its original historic standard. There was, RFP put out, my understanding, two bidders, Friends of Akmar and I believe Cobalt. Could I get that verified through staff, through the chair?
Through the chair, that is correct, yeah.
Now, is my understanding that the reason, this report actually is kind of ironic because I'm looking at it and says, this report is sale of Akmar state for adaptive reuse, yet it's not a report on what happened with the RFP process. So can I just help, help me understand? Because in this report, I don't see any information that gives me any comfort level and what and how the decision was arrived at.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes, the Deputy Mayor. So we did, through an information update to council a few weeks ago, provide some detail on the results of the RFP process. And the two proposals that we did receive didn't score sufficiently just to make it past the first stage of that process. So we spoke to that in the information update, and then in that information update suggested we'd be coming back to council with a, with a plan for going forward. So this report is really looking, focused on what is that plan going forward?
Okay, so that was a very high-level, if I remember, information report that didn't give a lot of detail. So can you, for the purposes of the, I guess we can now speak publicly on those proposals, can we not?
Can we go to?
Yes, I believe we can, we can speak on those two proposals. The, the two proposals were quite different, coming from two different approaches. The one was focused, and having said that, they were both looking at a sort of a multipurpose and multi-phase development process. The scoring had to do with the level of detail and specificity in the proposal, rather than the specifics of the actual use being inappropriate or less than appropriate.
Okay, so my understanding, though, through that information report, there was a commitment to sit down with both proponents to, to explain the shortfalls of their RFP.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So it is, in the procurement process, there is always that option, that if the, if the bidders want to come back and request a meeting, I have to check, look to procurement to see if they actually had made a request to do that. I don't believe there was, but...
Okay, and again, it's, it's just order of things. I'm a bit concerned that we already have a report here to take next steps. When we haven't sat down with the original proponents, it took time of their schedule to put forward RFP, we haven't closed the door on that discussion and briefing and feedback, and we're already entertaining another option. So I guess, I'm confused about timing.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Both proponents were offered and given a debriefing on their proposal, and that was the end of the process. Neither one of them chose to enact Policy 18, which is the vendor complaint resolution clause.
Okay, so that's the clarification I'm looking for. So when I look at this particular report in regards to the potential sale, I see a number of clauses which, you know, if we're going to try and protect the spirit and the intent of the, all the easements and the heritage component are pretty admirable. I guess the piece that isn't there is the fact that, for whatever reason, whatever organization comes forward to purchase it, that if they no longer feel the need or no longer want to hold on to that property, there's no language in here that says that we have first right of refusal, meaning that before they can just go out nearly and put it out to the open market themselves, that the city would get first option to say no. And I don't see that language in here.
Staff or anybody who'd like to take that on?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. As part of the appendix B to the report in number five guarantees, if the purchaser fails to comply with the conditions, then the city shall have the option to repurchase the property and receive a conveyance of it, free of all, clear of all charges and encumbrances.
Okay, and I read that, and I didn't, maybe this is a question you asked legal, but that doesn't, they could be meeting at all and then decide at some point that they're going to dispose of the asset. But there's no language here that suggests that if they dispose the asset, that the City of Hamilton gets first right of refusal. That language doesn't say that, or does it? Through the chair.
So through the Deputy Mayor, Eleonora Filippone is the lawyer on our staff who's been working on this matter, so I'll ask her if she can chime in.
Through the chair. A provision like that, we could try to negotiate that when we're coming up with an agreement of purchase and sale with prospective purchasers. Right now, we don't have that as a, as a mandatory criterion that council would want to see an agreement of purchase and sale. So if that would be a criterion that council wants, we can add that to the recommendations. And so then that way, staff would have clear direction. But right now, the intention with this report is just to cast a wide net and allow real estate staff to start discussions with people.
So then the question, if we don't put it in, then the question becomes, one, does that mean that if they went and sold it to another entity, that that entity would automatically need to abide by these rules?
Through the chair, anything that's registered against title on the property would carry through with the property. And so something like the easement from Ontario Heritage Trust, that goes with the land. So you, you can't contract out. Anybody that we sell to would not be able to contract that, contract out of that to a subsequent buyer unless they get the trust's permission to change it, which is not really...
So through the chair, I'm addressing item E. Substantially met the terms and conditions underlying the appendix B attached report, blah, 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 and any such other terms and conditions deemed approved by the general manager planning economic development entered in offer for this agreement with the city. So it says the manager of the real estate report backed the general issues committee with the potential purchasers that satisfied with these terms. Now, in this language, it also talks about if they don't, if they're not meeting the substantial terms, then we can, they'd have to sell it back to us, is that correct?
Oh, through the chair, E is just permission for us to negotiate. And then the next step would be to come back to the general issues committee indicating, these are the proposals that we received, these are the terms and conditions of the sale, are you satisfied with them, and can, do we have your approval to actually sell? This report is not authorizing staff to actually sell on terms that we consider appropriate. We need to come back to you for approval.
Okay, so actually, it's item, page 2 of 2 of the appendix B guarantees, if the purchaser fails to comply with the conditions, then the city shall have the option to repurchase the property and to receive the conveyance of it free and clear. So in the scenario I had talked about, because I saw that language missing, could it be, you know, so they come in, we approve the sale, but no conditions in regards to resale, they go out and resell, understanding they still have to, anything untitled. But does this particular language still impact on their ability, or to the new group that may come in for ownership?
Through the chair, yes, that would be what that provision means. So any agreement of purchase and sale that we have, we would negotiate that if they can't comply with, you know, respecting the historical preservation, et cetera, then the city would have the right to repossess it.
Okay, appreciate that. I firmly think that we need to try and that any, any thought of the original, any organization reselling it, they'd have to get first right of refusal to the City of Hamilton, period. I will not, I will not be comfortable the way this is written now. I think that language is needed. So I would hope that we can make that change. And then the next comment I was going to make, Mr. Deputy Mayor philosophically, I did talk to Ian earlier, and I'm going to get Ian to confirm it, but of heritage designated buildings, and geographically, would it be correct for me to say that every geographic area of this city is represented by heritage building ownership of the city? If we lose Akmar, that means the mountain won't have any?
Through the chair, yes, that's, that is a fair statement. The, the Hamilton Mountain, Old Hamilton Mountain, it's, Akmar is the one property that the city owns and operates that has actually has a municipal designation on it.
So I guess my concern, Mr. Chair, is that we respect all the different areas and the history that some of the buildings, and I'm not one, I mean, I've got three, I've got Century Manor, Balfour House is owned by the Province of Ontario, and Akmar. And I can tell you now that Akmar is the one that's most significant, it is the mountains' Dundurn Castle, and that it's very important to the heritage society and all those that took time to put bids in. So what I'm going to suggest is, because this has been a long, long road, is that we go to a concurrent process. So we go out for sale with those conditions, but at the same time, we look for the city, maybe in conjunction with Friends of Akmar and Cobalt, to come back with a proposal in itself, and then both those proposals come back here for a final discussion, debate. My preference is to keep it in, in, in city ownership, but it has to make sense in regards to the proposal that comes forward. This is the last stitch effort to make that attempt. I don't want to handcuff my council colleagues, so I think the ideal situation is have both of those proposals come back to this council, and we can ultimately make a decision on its merits. So I would hope that my colleagues would respect that type of process, a bit concurrent. And I would ask through the Deputy Mayor to, to Ian, to staff, whether or not that would be feasible for staff to also put a proposal in, occurred with this sale option.
Through the chair, I don't see any, any barrier to that. I think that's a good suggestion.
Great. So I would only ask that at the appropriate time, I know I've talked to the mayor, and it was actually the mayor that raised the, the issue of the city, and I wholeheartedly agree. So this would be an opportunity for us, for once overall, to have all the, you know, everything on the table and look at the proposals and what we're trying to accomplish and make informed decisions. So at the right time, I'll move the motion that we run a concurrent process with the city coming forward with a proposal, with the, the sale going out there and with whatever interested party, and then we'll make the final decision at that time. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Whitehead. We have Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you. I have a question through, as your Deputy Mayor to the city manager. Chris, you recall last year that we issued an expression of interest, asked for individuals to display whether or not they'd be interested in, in bidding on an RFP with the heritage easement on it? And we got some six respondents to that, some were very interesting, capable operators of various sorts of types of businesses and well-funded. And concurrent with that, when that report came back to us, that we issued that RFP, you pointed out to council that you had a very credible operator that would be interested in, in purchasing that site, however, they could not, for their own internal reasons, which some of us had trouble understanding, would not participate in a public process. And so my question to you is, since the, we decided to stay the course, there are six good operators that submitted expressions of interest, and we should go out and see what they have to offer because they're following a public process. But since that didn't work, through you to Chris, Chris, do you know if the individual, and you kept a confidential from us at their request, after which we get, are they still interested?
Mr. Murray?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The answer is yes.
Okay. So would it be the right thing to do to table this motion, to ask you to go off and, and get a report from them that they are interested in what they're prepared to offer before we throw it out in the open market? Because I'm concerned if we do, they won't participate again because it'll be a public process.
Mr. Murray?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. You know, in light of the report, which has been out in public now for about a week or so, I mean, I think they're well aware of the situation and the direction that we're heading in in terms of selling it with, and with it, all the restrictions, and, and I think they're well aware of that. I think they're prepared to, to sit down with Ray, our head of real estate, and start to better understand the, the kind of working relationship they need with the, the city to make a deal work. So I don't think what we have in front of you is going to discourage them, to be quite honest. I think the same thing is true of the two individuals Counselor Whitehead just mentioned, the, the parties that were part of the RFP that weren't successful. They have every opportunity through the, the sale of this property to participate in that process with Ray. So to your original question, yes, this group is still interested. Are they aware of the approach that we're taking? Of course they are, because they've read it in a public document. And are they willing to participate in that process? My understanding is that they're prepared to sit down with Ray. So we don't have to do anything extraordinary at this point in time, except continuing the direction we're going.
So you're, you're impressed with this, Apken, that you think they have the financial resources and the wherewithal to comply with the heritage easement, at the same time restore and put it into an adaptive reuse?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, the short answer to that is yes. I just wanted to say something about Ray. Ray, having worked in the City of Toronto, has dealt with similar types of properties in Toronto, every bit as complex as this one. And it, you know, what, what this approach will afford us an opportunity to do is sit down at a table with whoever is interested and start to take them through a process whereby first and foremost, we'll be interested to see what they have, the financial wherewithal, and are committed to doing the kinds of things that they need to do in order to, for us to come back and, and give you guys a final proposal for selling this property, meeting all of our terms and conditions. So, you know, the short answer is that that priority is still out there. The other point I think I'm making here is that the parties that have participated in the past in the RFP have every right and opportunity to be engaged in this real estate approach. It will really boil down to, are you committed to adhering to all the easements that are being protected by the province and the city, and do you have the money to pay for everything?
Okay, I just got a feedback, I think I just heard you say, that stay the course, approve this resolution to put it up for sale, and you have at least one bona fide bid that will, should come in? They're not afraid of a public process this time, because it'll be a tender, I suspect? They're not concerned about engaging in a public process this time, that they will support a sale? And at the same time, the other two groups that were unsuccessful in their first proposal can also bid on this? Is that really what I heard you say through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, that's what you heard me say. And others that are listening right now that may have similar wherewithal have every opportunity to meet with Ray and, and see whether or not they want to meet our needs and, and address the financial, you know, requirements in order to be successful.
Okay. Will it be a tender, where you'll slit an envelope and find out who meets the criteria, or will it be a negotiation?
This is now, now I'm out of my league, so I will turn this over to the real estate or whoever darlings here in place of Ray.
Yes, we would certainly be complying with the public process as, as prescribed in our real estate portfolio management strategy. So anybody coming forward with bids, they would not necessarily be sealed. We would be measuring each bid on its merits and making sure that all of the terms and conditions of these, of the agreement are met.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to support the recommendation for us today. I think it solves Counselor Whitehead's problem, where the other two individuals can, can also participate. And I'm encouraged that we, we know of at least one other very bona fide, well-financed group that will submit a proposal on this. So I'm prepared to accept the resignation, or the recitation, the recommendation. Thank you.
We have Mr. Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you. And so this has been a long and arduous journey, and, you know, it was around when we first traded for the property, if I can put it accurately, I think that's what essentially happened. It's been problematic ever since, but notwithstanding that, I think there are still opportunities for a city proposal. And I'm not, not just quite ready yet to kind of throw that notion out the door as a potential city-owned facility that can be useful for us going forward, both from a museum perspective, as well as from a reception and, and reception area and use perspective that was originally proposed quite some time ago, that really hasn't kind of gone forward. And in light of discussions that are happening in other areas with other levels of government, I think there are some imminent opportunities to see if we can raise the sufficient funds to, to be able to keep it within city hands as well. So what I'd like to see happen, not unlike what Counselor Whitehead has proposed, or we talked about, is to have the both streams happening at the same time. I don't want, I don't want to lose sight of an opportunity to kind of keep it in the fold. And at the same time, if a good proposal comes forward, a private sector that's prepared to adhere to all the heritage restrictions that are on there, then we can measure up one against the other and, and make a decision ultimately as to what direction to go. So I'm, I'm more in that camp than just following this process singularly and solely. I would ask staff, though, I mean, in terms of the heritage, the heritage issues have been the barrier up until now. I'm intrigued to hear that there's another provider out there that isn't daunted by that, because it is a, a very potentially expensive option for them to pursue. And what's, what's the, what's the estimated cost in terms of retrofitting the building for any use, actually, at this point?
Through the chair, the estimates that we have right now, based on an analysis that was done a few years ago, is $6 million to bring it up to a, a base minimum standard. That is, that's sort of class D estimate, so it's plus or minus, say, 10 or 20%. And much will depend on the ultimate decision on final adaptive reuse. That's going to affect the ultimate cost quite a bit. So what I'm giving you is essentially a ballpark figure. We've been using this figure basically as a, as a holder, as a placekeeper, and to give people a sense of the scale. Obviously, if, if, depending on the scale of the, the level of public accessibility to the site, that tends to drive up the price, et cetera, or the cost of, of doing the restoration. So that's just ballparking if that's adequate.
Right, so that, that's essentially the minimum, I would think, in terms of making it functional?
Through the chair, yes, that's, that, that is the minimum. Having said that, that's a, that's a multi-year cost, that's, you know, it's not all at once. But yes, that, that's what you have to be thinking about in terms of a general ballpark as a, as a minimum, yes.
Okay, so, so I mean, it's for whoever the private provider is, I'm, I'm, I think it's a stretch to, to suggest that someone's going to put up $6 million or more, quite frankly, to restore a building for, I mean, I can't imagine, we'll see what happens. But I, I'd like to not preclude the option of our city, you know, staying engaged in this process and in this facility as another option going forward, because if this one fails, that's where we're going to be anyway. So why not, why not start looking at the other opportunities that might be available out there to, to pull this together, including funding sources? And so, yeah, I'm gonna, well, I'm not going to talk about that. So funding sources, there are some potential funding sources rolling around out there at, at the moment relative to some issues that we've, we've got authority to actually pursue. So I certainly want to see this in the mix of all of that, and having it part of a city historical facility, I think, still has relevance and importance. So I'm, I'm not really prepared to kind of throw it off to the private sector unless someone's prepared to do all the heritage stuff and make sure that there's public access to some degree, so, so we can compare one to the other, I guess is what I'm suggesting. So I'm, I'm, I'm in support Counselor Whitehead's motion that we go on two streams here, and that, that we allow both of those streams to converge, and we can compare one to the other, and then make a decision as to, you know, which one, which is the better course to go, or if there's, if it's the only option, if, if there's no private sector provider that comes forward, then really the only option we have, and we have to grapple with that and then come to terms with it, is that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to deal with this building ourselves. And that's, that's been an issue that's been on the table for one heck of a long time, and we've been trying to get around it. I'm not so sure that we can, but in the meantime, if we can, great. If not, let's make sure that we have a proposal in front of us that, in comparison to whatever the private sector might be willing to do. So I'm going to support Counselor Whitehead's motion, hopefully the council will as well, so that we keep both of those options open, and then hopefully, at, at one level or another at the end of this, that we make a decision in one direction or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask that you take the chair, I'd like to comment on this. To support your comments, actually, given yesterday's announcement posted in the Globe of Mail about Canada 150, I believe there's about $150 million over the next two years that will be accessible through the regional provincial agencies. And I'm wondering if somewhere in this report, in support of Counselor Whitehead's motion, and in support of the earlier delegation, that we work diligently to see if we can, within our ability, access those funds. $150 million going across the country, it'd be great to see some of that federal money come here to Hamilton, as well as, I think, great in, in keeping this a public cultural asset. Certainly concerned with the idea of private Through the Chair, yes, that's, that is the minimum. Having said that, that's a multi-year cost, that's, you know, it's not all at once. But yes, that's what you have to be thinking about in terms of a general ballpark as a minimum, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, it's for whoever the private provider is, I think it's a stretch to suggest that someone's going to put up $6 million or more, quite frankly, to restore a building for, I mean, I can't imagine. We'll see what happens. But I'd like to not preclude the option of our city, you know, staying engaged in this process and in this facility as another option going forward, because if this one fails, that's where we're going to be anyway. So why not, why not start looking at the other opportunities that might be available out there to pull this together, including funding sources? And so, yeah, I'm gonna, well, I'm not gonna talk about that. So, funding sources, there are some potential funding sources rolling around out there at the moment relative to some issues that we've, we've got authority to actually pursue. So I certainly want to see this in the mix of all of that. And having it part of a city historical facility, I think, still has relevance and importance. So I'm not really prepared to kind of throw it off to the private sector unless someone's prepared to do all the heritage stuff and make sure that there's public access to some degree, so we can compare one to the other, I guess is what I'm suggesting. So I'm, I'm in support councillor Whitehead's motion that we go on two streams here, and that we allow both of those streams to converge, and we can compare one to the other, and then make a decision as to, you know, which is the better course to go. Or if there's, if it's the only option, if there's no private sector provider that comes forward, then really the only option we have, and we have to grapple with that and then come to terms with it, is that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to deal with this building ourselves. And that's been an issue that's been on the table for one heck of a long time, and we've been trying to get around it. I'm not so sure that we can. But in the meantime, if we can, great. If not, let's make sure that we have a proposal in front of us that, in comparison to whatever the private sector might be willing to do. So I'm going to support councillor Whitehead's motion. Hopefully, the council will as well, so that we keep both of those options open. And then, hopefully, at one level or another at the end of this, that we make a decision in one direction or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked that you'd take the Chair. I'd like to comment on this. To support your comments, actually, given yesterday's announcement posted in the Globe of Mail about Canada 150, I believe there's about $150 million over the next two years that will be accessible through the regional provincial agencies. And I'm wondering if somewhere in this report, in support of councillor Whitehead's motion, and in support of the earlier delegation, that we work diligently to see if we can, within our ability, access those funds. $150 million going across the country. It'd be great to see some of that federal money come here to Hamilton, as well as, I think, great in keeping this a public cultural asset. Certainly concerned with the idea of privatization, as well as, you know, once it being sold, us never having a chance to get it back again. So I'm wondering if, through you, Mr. Chair, to staff, that somewhere relatively quickly, people can look into the $150 million our Prime Minister has put on the table, as recently as yesterday, to potentially look at how this might fit in for that model. So that's the only comment that I have on that. It's topical, it was in yesterday's Globe of Mail, and hopefully we can get some access.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. In this report, subsection A is asking that council rescind the direction that was provided to staff earlier. I do have copies here, and I can also read it out, if anybody would like to see. Cover both. The original direction that was provided to staff was that staff be directed to proceed with the development of a comprehensive operational plan, based on the proposed use concept profile for the Akmar Estate, was attached to a report in consultation with community and other stakeholder groups, and report back to GIC. And subsection B, that in addition to completion of the operational plan referred to in subsection B, that staff be directed to issue an expression of interest for the potential private use and/or sale of Akmar Estate, and report back to GIC regarding the interests received. If you'd like copies, I can actually pass those out as well.
Just as a note, I believe that the application date for the Fed Dev on the 150 is actually June 9th, so it's pretty time-sensitive. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Was that a question, or did you want to comment? Tell them, no, we're good?
Just maybe through you, Mr. Chair, are you familiar with the money that's been put on the table?
Through the Chair, yes. And June 9th is the date that's in my head as well, yes.
And so is it feasible that somewhere in this process, through, through the Chair, to either Mr. Murray or Mr. Zagarik, that we might be able to put out a preliminary application in regards to this project?
So through the Chair, cultural facilities are an eligible category under this program. The deadline, while it is June 9th, it requires council resolution, so we would require a special council to put forward any applications against this program. And while the commitment is $150 million nationally, it is $44 million in the province of Ontario over the next two years.
So, Mr. Chair, my hope is that even given the fast turnaround on this, that Hamilton does not get overlooked in $150 million of federal dollars, or I should say $44 million of Fed Dev Ontario money that we could potentially miss out on if we don't, if we don't find a way to perhaps get this in play.
We're good? Thank you. Chair, it's back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Mayor. We have councillor Whitehead on the second-time speakers list.
First of all, I wanted with the motion on the conditions of sale, that we add that the motion to, that any resale, the city has first right of refusal. Is that proper language for it? Through the, through Deputy Mayor, to staff? I've seen them shaking their heads, yes. So I'd like to add that as a, I guess, 5.3 on the conditions. So it's moved by, myself, by councillor DeVal.
We have a motion. If you could please restate the motion, just for the clarity of council, so we know what we're voting on?
Well, as part of the condition of sale, that any potential resale of the property, the city of Hamilton gets first right of refusal, meaning that clearly they'd have to offer us the opportunity to purchase it. They could clean up the language, but certainly that's the principle.
Members of council, we have a motion on the floor, moved by councillor Whitehead, seconded by councillor DeVal, to include the first right of refusal on any potential negotiation with potential private buyers.
So, sorry, what it is, if a buyer purchased the property, and over a number of years decide they no longer need or have a desire to hold on to the property, that don't automatically up and lift and sell it to anybody without the city either approving it or having first right of refusal in that process. Currently, the way this language is written, it doesn't appear to cover that off, and I just want to make sure that's covered off.
Is everybody clear on the motion that's on the floor? All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Any opposed? Excellent.
And the next motion, Mr. Chair, is to support a due process, which is written here and actually pretty well captured in, this must have been the General Information Report 12021. And it was a motion that was passed, and I guess it went into the outstanding list? Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, that is currently on the outstanding business list. In order to maintain this, you would just have to delete subsection A in the report before you.
If we could, councillor Whitehead, can we, we're going to allow Mayor Eisenberger to speak on the point?
Absolutely.
Sure.
I mean, the suggestion, based on the motion that we're trying to put together, is if we remove on item A, that it be rescinded off of that motion, then that motion will carry forward, and both elements of what we're looking for are going to be there.
Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, that is correct.
So moved.
We have moved by councillor Whitehead, seconded by Mayor Eisenberger. All those in favor of the motion?
Carried.
Carried. All those opposed? None. As amended?
Now, you've got to go back to the motions.
We, okay, so we've, if we can just please have Madam Clerk speak to this?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes. What you've done is you have a mover and a seconder, and you've carried the amendment, which is what I think they're looking for, and now you just need a motion on the report as amended.
So we have the motion as amended, moved by councillor Ferguson, seconded by councillor Whitehead. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you once again, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
The steady hand. We are now on to item 8.1. Give me one second. Moved by Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by councillor Farr. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Moved by Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by councillor Pearson. Carried. We have items 8.3. Moved by councillor Partridge, seconded by councillor Conley. All those in favor?
Carried.
Item 8.4. Moved by councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Johnson. All those in favor? Carried. 8.5. Moved by councillor Whitehead, seconded by Mayor Eisenberger. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Item 8.6. Lots of dings. We have councillor Ferguson first, followed by councillor Whitehead.
I wasn't here at the start of the meeting. It was a police agenda review, so I didn't have an opportunity to declare conflict in this. If the clerk would permit me to, I could do that right now.
I think that should be acceptable, given your absence? Madam Clerk, is that okay? It's recorded?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. My apologies, I didn't hear. I was just checking to make sure the gentleman could get outside the door.
Councillor Ferguson is asking, due to his late arrival, the ability to declare an interest in this item.
Absolutely.
A conflict of interest. Thank you for the clarity, councillor Marula. We have councillor Whitehead. You have the floor.
Thank you. Well, this is an information, it takes time to call the lawyer, Chris, that came out as last name, from the Uber Canadian representative, to ask him a number of questions. So just clarification on the insurance. They, his comment was that there are over $5 million in insurance coverage, and that it exceeds most municipalities in regards to the taxi industry. So can I get clarification? Because here, it says, appears that they're under insufficient coverage.
To staff?
Yep.
Maybe Janice Atwood-Piekowski, or, oh, here we go, Mr. Leanhurst.
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair, the, during our discussions in January, the $5 million was mentioned as well. It was also mentioned in an affidavit in relation to a legal matter that's before the courts in Toronto. The question that we have, and other municipalities have, is they say they have this insurance, but no one really knows much about the insurance, who the carriers, and that is our concern. We also have spoken to the Canadian Association of Insurance Brokers, as well as the Ontario Association of Insurance Brokers, and they also have the same concern. So although Chris Schaefer has said that they have sufficient coverage in the amount of $5 million that would cover passengers and drivers, there has been no concrete information put forward to, during our review, or with any other municipality, about who the carrier is and is in fact, it is coverage. The Ontario Association and the Canadian Association Insurance Brokers have actually issued a warning that if someone is driving for one of these companies, that they do need commercial insurance, and there is a possibility that they will not be covered. So we're just bringing this to your attention, that although they say there is coverage for $5 million, we have no concrete information or evidence of that.
Okay. And I also-
Thank you, Mr. Leanhurst. Councillor Whitehead.
I appreciate it. Of course, his argument is that it's been acceptable in most jurisdictions that they're currently operating throughout the world. So I guess it's confusing to them, why it wouldn't be acceptable here in Ontario, Canada. And I don't have a response to that, other than the fact is they are operating in many jurisdictions around the world. So have we checked with those other jurisdictions? For example, I asked about San Francisco, it's one of the, I guess, the original originators. I asked a number of questions, that was one of them, and it seems to be very acceptable by the city of San Francisco. And New York, New York as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the, the insurance, Uber is operating in other communities. It is operating in different communities in Canada as well, but outside of the municipal regulations. There is no place in Ontario or Canada that we know that are, they are operating within the regulations.
Okay. Appreciate that. The, the other question I asked is the experience of, I don't see it in the report, but I wanted to understand what the impact is on the taxi industry, so I asked a number of pointed questions on that. One of them was what in fact was the experience in San Francisco as a result of Uber having huge success there. And my understanding is that, in fact, Uber actually unveiled a pent-up demand within the community that otherwise wouldn't have been realized, and it really hasn't had a net impact on the taxi industry. So do we have any comparatives? Do we have any understanding on that, in that regard, what impacts it may, it may not have in the taxi industry?
Yes, through, through you, Mr. Chair, the, that certainly has been one of their marketing points, that they are actually going to open up the industry. We have no information in relation to the Canadian experience or the Ontario experience in that set.
Okay. The, the other question I asked, and then again, it was on the concern I have for security of the passenger. And they contested that, first of all, it is a paperless or a payless process, so there's no money being transferred between the passenger, directly between the passenger and the driver. And that, so there's less likely that there's going to be any type of robbery. But as far as protection of the individual, everything's recorded in the name, address, all the pre-information is already logged, so they know exactly who the client is, and they know exactly who the driver is. So they contest that there's actually greater level of protection in the Uber model than there is in the current model. Have we assessed that?
Again, through you, Mr. Chair, that is certainly one of their, their marketing strategies, that say that they have more protection. In the Hamilton schedule, we actually have cameras in the vehicle, so it actually assists in identifying anyone else that may be in the vehicle besides just the client. But certainly, what they've been coming across as is that because of no transaction, it is, they have been able to identify the drivers and the passenger. However, if you do follow lots of the media reports involving Uber, there has been incidents throughout the world of some security breaches in relation to that security claim.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I did ask questions about the incident in India, and they have indicated that they brought in additional application that doesn't appear to be needed in North America to address the safety issues as pertaining to the experience in India. So it appears that they've taken steps to address that deficiency. But again, I don't know if, in the review, what that strategy was. Have we?
No, we've not.
Okay. Well, those are my questions, Madam Chair. I'm intrigued. I'm always concerned about our industry, because it's certainly a very heavily, highly regulated industry in our community, because in many cases, they're moving our most vulnerable, whether it's kids to our schools through school board contracts, or people to dialysis services, whatever the services are, they are most vulnerable. So we have a responsibility as a community to ensure that they're protected. And I'm just not warm and fuzzy quite yet on the Uber experience, and I did take the time to make the call and try and see if I could get that comfort level. I'm not quite there yet. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor Whitehead. It's Mr. Chair for future reference. We have councillor Marula on the speakers list.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on this particular item, and when, when the issue was brought up here, the motion a few, a few months ago, it was in reaction to the industry's growth nationally and internationally, and as well as very well-documented, serious concerns surrounding public safety and regulation of fees, and the fact that there is no regulations. Hence, one day a trip could cost X amount of dollars, and another day they could, at whim, just change it as a result of not being regulated. Not too much in the fact that this is an attack on, on an industry that's longstanding in this community, and one that has bricks and mortars, that are paying taxes, are paying over $1 million in fees to the city. So when you combine the fact that this really is an attack on the taxi industry, traditional taxi industry, when you look at the public safety concerns, regardless of what they claim as their promotional bit, and as well, as well as the passenger being subjected to potential lack of liability insurance, because once these drivers, God forbid, are in a collision and someone is either hurt, killed, or maimed, then the rubber will hit the road at that time with respect to whether or not they're insured. And clearly, the insurance industry has clearly stated that they do not buy into the fact that they have insurance. So you look at all of the variables, and you look at most of the jurisdictions that are rejecting Uber, they're not doing it at the local level because of the lack of authority, particularly surrounding access to the internet. So in places like Singapore, as an example, they shut it down entirely, but they did it from a national perspective. And I think the only way that we will in any way eliminate the future risk to Hamilton, but also the existing risks in some of the Canadian cities, is to have a national strategy on, to deal with this particular issue. And until we do so, I think they will continue doing exactly what they're doing, and that is defying laws with no consequences to date. This really is no different than if you or I wanted to set up a bar without a liquor license, and have everyone pay by credit card, and just suggest that I'm legally entitled to do so. You're not. So in essence, they aren't either. By trying to create rules, and simultaneously breaking rules, is laughable to suggest that just because they say so, it's legal. It's not. And we need to fight this, because I think it's precedent-setting for a number of aspects regarding not only local, provincial, but also national issues. And we need to take this very seriously and collectively work with our neighboring municipalities, our neighboring provinces, to ensure that we not only vigilant, but we're also aggressive in preventing the expansion of Uber in Canada and the province and in Hamilton. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to pass the Chair over to Mayor Eisenberger, so I can comment on this topic. Thank you very much, Mayor Eisenberger. I know certainly share some of the safety concerns of members around the table here at council. You noted that there is, there has also historically been safety concerns around our current taxi industry. I know by some, they could be looking at it as somewhat of an oligarchy in my very short time here. I still can't figure out how this plate system works, how we fix a number of plates. There's certainly concerns, being a non-driver myself and having to take it time to time, dealing with drivers that are present here in Hamilton, I'm confused by this system that, you know, has people controlling plates that don't drive. So it opens up a broader conversation. I've heard comments in the past- I've heard comments in the past that it's an egg that can't be unscrambled and certainly I quite admire that Toronto's looking at. But I'm hopeful that in the future, given this new thrust of Uber, that there is some kind of market competition that allows for better protection of the consumers and, quite frankly, the drivers. Because I still can't, I still can't wrap my head around this particular system. So just something I wanted to go on the public record about, I'm hopeful that it's not an attack on an industry, but a conversation where we can actually have some competition in an industry rather than a present kind of oligarchical system. So I just wanted to say that on the public record. Thank you.
Okay. No additional speakers. Chair, it's back to you.
Are there any other speakers on this particular topic? Counselor Johnson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just a piece of information that's been thought-provoking to me regarding Uber. When John Tory was campaigning to be mayor of Toronto, he was pro-Uber and he thought that this was pro-business, pro-a sophisticated way of delivering taxi service, and pro-a more modern technologically-minded way of doing taxi service. I'm not sure if he's changed his mind or not, but it is the case that on May the 1st, the municipality of Toronto filed an injunction to block Uber and to block its attempt to register as a taxi service and not as a limousine service, which really, more correctly, is what Uber is. So I find it interesting that in the city of Toronto, our great partner city, our sister city, they're recognizing Uber as frankly too complicated for the existing taxi laws to be simply applied. And their concern is the safety concern, the same one that we've been hearing about today. So we're not alone in this and I think that's relevant. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Johnson. Are there any other speakers on this item? We have Counselor Farr.
Since we're kind of getting into referencing other municipalities and what's going on, I thought I, San Francisco, no effect on the taxi industry. And if I did, according to Engadget.com, in 2012, there was the average monthly trip for San Francavi, 1,424 trips per month. That is now today, 504 trips per month. So the Uber effect in San Francisco on the traditional taxicab industry has not been good, at least from this and I think other sources.
We have a motion, we have a motion to receive. Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by Counselor Farr. All those in favor, carried. Any opposed? Counselor Ferguson, welcome back. On item 8.7, moved by, this, oh, I actually had some questions on this one, but I'll remove myself. We have moved by Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by Counselor Duvall. All those in favor? Carried. Item 8.8, moved by Johnson, seconded by Pearson. All those in favor? Carried. Item 8.9, moved by Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by Counselor Partridge. All those in favor? Item 8.10, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Johnson. That's A to B, not B to A. All those in favor? Those opposed? We have items 811 have been moved, 812 have been moved. Item 813, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Collins. All those in favor? 814, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. And this is regarding actually 814, I'd like to move it, just to receive those minutes. But I'd like to speak to 815, please.
We have item 8.14. Is there any other, are there any other comments on that? Seconded by Counselor Farr. All those in favor? On item 815, we have Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. As the chairperson for the Grants Committee, I just wanted to have a few thank yous out there, just my colleagues and staff who stuck it out for two very stressful meetings. And please note that this is going to be transition year. That doesn't mean that this is a base given to all the organizations. They've been put on notice that next year this may change. But having said that, everyone is still getting exactly what they got last year if it was appropriate and they passed, if they passed the 60 percentile. Having said that, the staff are committed to working with those organizations that are unable to meet the 60 percent. So hopefully we'll have more success for them next year. We still have lots more to do. It's possible that some events or organizations were not in the appropriate category that they feel they should be under. So staff are determining, are determined to get that sorted out as well. And just for the arts, staff has explained during the second meeting that this was, the funding was actually analyzed by the adjudicator, adjudication jury of nine persons, three of them being from out of town, and the other six of all nine have absolutely no vested interest in the grants process this year. So, and lastly, I just want to thank Stephanie for all the, because we had some amendments, in fact, we had a long list of amendments, and I've checked off each one of them to my colleagues. I brought my notes as well. We went through Stephanie's notes and she was bang on. She hadn't missed one. So I really want to thank you, Stephanie. I know this was pretty tedious and your eyes are probably crossed over from it. But again, I really want to thank the staff for all the hard work that they did, John Hurtel and his group, and there's Carmen's up there, Monique is up there, Carrie, wherever you are, you were here earlier. But thank you very much for everyone and helping us through this transition year. Next year, it might be a whole different bag of eggs, but this year we got through it almost unscathed. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much, Counselor Johnson. We have Counselor Farr, followed by Counselor Partridge.
I would very much like to thank Chair Johnson and the rest of the committee for putting up with me for a little over four and a half hours, I believe. Obviously, I have a vested interest, probably a committee I might have wanted to throw my name at when it came time for selection as Counselor lax. However, I did commit to people like the AAC and the Hamilton Arts Council and others that I would sit in from time to time if that gives you peace of mind, not always. And certainly, I was probably the only person in town from the arts side of things that was happy to hear about the tabling that occurred. It had to occur a week later because Counsel Ferguson had asked for some. I was unavailable at the first meeting and very much regretted that was, but was able to attend the new date. And certainly did contribute thanks to the committee's willingness to allow me to participate and speak for some of, many of, the arts organizations as it relates to the arts side of things that were widely discussed. And I'll say this, and despite, you know, I think I retracted one of the things I said within that four and a half hour time span about a certain condition of the process that, in my opinion, remains the same. It's not perfect. As Counselor Johnson just alluded to, there may still be tweaks. We referenced many times that this is a transitional year. But I referenced throughout the committee meeting, it's not exactly what the Arts Funding Task Force had envisioned and again, focused on the arts grant side. However, we have come now in retrospect, after having a few days to digest and work with my colleagues and talk to members of the arts community, I would suggest we have gone a long, long way. And I'm sure most are appreciative and certainly from the perspective of awards to Counselor, with two of those in addition to some enhancements on bottom lines that you've graciously allowed me to put forward and support it, or if some of you put them forward on my behalf, I want to just again tell you how much I appreciate that. And certainly those two organizations appreciate that. And I look forward in the coming couple of weeks to sit down and have conversations with those two organizations, storied organizations in the arts and work with staff and have the conversation on how to make their applications better for future and, you know, use this as a learning year, if you will. So again, thank you, Chair. Thank you to the committee for putting up with me on that last Friday afternoon. And I look forward to future meetings and your hospitality at those meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Farr. We'll be sure to keep you off the list next time. We have Counselor Partridge.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I can just picture four hours here at that table. No, I can't. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I too want to thank the committee very much. Phoenix Place, which is a women's residential program, has been in the news over the last couple of months. It's an organization that is certainly close to my heart in terms of the social service sector out there, helping women who are from challenges in life, particularly domestic abuse. They go to Phoenix Place and they wrap their arms around them. They give them all kinds of programs to help them right through. It's not just providing a room. It's not just providing, you know, daycare and opportunity to go back to school and further their education, but it is everything. It's counseling, it's duty counsel, it's just providing everything and it's free. And they are just so appreciative of being able to get this funding. My commitment, I've committed to working with them going forward to strengthen their organization, to strengthen their sustainability. They have a good board and looking forward to developing some strategies for them. They're on reasonably good grounds right now. It is the future sustainability that we need to work on. And I am just, I'm excited about it and I very much look forward to it. I want to recognize staff, particularly Carmen, who just works tirelessly with our community groups out there. And I'm just very pleased and, you know, as a city council, this is the good work that we need to do and that our taxpayers' money should be going forward to. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Partridge. We have Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we receive 8.15. One quick question to Stephanie. We had to delay this by one week. It was on March, or May the 8th is our original meeting. May the 15th was our, because we tabled it. Can you tell me or tell the, those that are listening, whether or not this had any impact on the process going forward? Is this the same timeline that it's going to the same councils that would have if it was on May the 8th?
Through you, Madam Chairman, no. It actually has no difference. We moved from the May 8th to the May 15th meeting purposely so that it wouldn't affect the timeline. It will still go to the May 27th meeting and your motion would actually be to approve.
To approve, I'm sorry. I would like to move to approve it, seconded by Counselor Ferguson, who is the vice chair, and Steve Savore and Roseanne, thank you again for all the work and your teams.
We have moved by Johnson, seconded by Ferguson, that this item 8.15 be approved. All those in favor? Carried. Excellent job. We are now on to item 9, which are the motions, but we've dealt with that, right?
Item 9.1 was withdrawn, yes.
9.1 was withdrawn, okay. So we're now on to notices of motion. We have item 10.1, which is an option respecting unanimous stakeholders agreement known as the Hamilton Realty Capital Incorporated. Counselor Partridge, would you please introduce your motion?
Yes, thank you. It is a notice of motion, but I have a motion here to waive the rules. It is moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Chad Collins to waive the rules, to introduce a motion respecting options, respecting the unanimous stakeholders agreement known as the Hamilton Realty Capital Corp.
We have the motion to waive the rules, moved by Counselor Partridge, seconded by Counselor Collins. All those in favor? Carried. On the question, Counselor Farr.
Respectfully wondering if I could get from the mover a reason for the haste as per the direction to waive the rules, please.
There is a question on the haste, Counselor Partridge. Is this time-sensitive?
It is not time-sensitive. However, it is more of a housekeeping issue and I'm the chair of planning. And we felt that certainly in our discussions at agenda review, there has not been a formal motion put forward. This is asking for, and I will just speak to it briefly, this is asking for the report back, which Counselor Collins has raised at many, many committee meetings over the past few months for an update. And this is really just formalizing that process. So I would like to waive the rules, which we've now voted on, and carry forward.
I don't think we voted yet. I put my hand up to speak to it, but I'm in favor regardless. Thank you.
So let's reaffirm the motion. All those in favor? Carried. Opposed? Reserve the same right? Okay. You now have the floor.
All right, thank you. And so this is the motion. It is moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Chad Collins. Whereas the 10-year unanimous stakeholders agreement for the public-private partnership known as Hamilton Realty Capital Inc., the corporation, was signed on July 26, 2006. And whereas that agreement will be up for extension, termination, or modification in July of 2016. And whereas the General Issues Committee is aware that the corporation has purchased the Canon knitting mills and has been looking for viable development options for this facility, therefore be it resolved that the general manager of Planning and Economic Development be directed to analyze the options the city has with respect to the unanimous stakeholders agreement known as Hamilton Capital Inc., the corporation, and report to the General Issues Committee by December 2, 2015. And if I could speak to it briefly, it is pretty self-explanatory. And as I did say earlier, this is somewhat of a housekeeping motion, although a very important one. And, you know, I want to thank Counselor Collins for seconding this motion, but also for raising the request for an update at the last couple of planning committee meetings. And he's been very diligent to bring this forward. Knowing that we are coming up to that 10-year deadline, it is important that we get a formal motion on the table requesting that staff do a thorough analysis and a report back to us. This may have been appropriate back in 2006, although I'm not so sure about that. Until we see the analysis, we'll be able to make a better decision. But folks, Hamilton is really taking off. We have an enormous, enormous amount of development happening. And, you know, it's really been happening, quite frankly, in the absence of this, in the absence of this partnership. And when I look at a partnership, I think all of us expect that a partnership is two entities, whether they be people, whether they be organizations, working together towards a common goal. And I'm not so sure that that's happening here. And I certainly don't mean anything towards our staff. Our staff are working diligently, they're working very hard. And I would wager that we have some of our best staff in planning and economic development working on this particular partnership. But they can't do it in isolation and they can't do it with only one staff person working on it. So I think it needs to be reviewed, it needs a proper analysis, just to determine is this really where we need to be putting our money. And I think that, you know, we look at value for money around this table. I know it's important to every one of us and that due diligence has never had a better time to be called into question and into be verified. So those are my comments and I do hope that everyone around the table will support me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Partridge. Are there any questions, any comments? Counselor Farr.
Thank you again. And I thank the mover for referencing Counselor Collins. So I think he's brought it up on a number of occasions as Counselor Partridge has suggested. So I look forward to the information coming back and I anticipate, like most reports, Mr. Chairman, it will include the historical background section, which I think will be helpful for a lot of folks with respect to Hamilton Real Estate Capital Corp. Right from the beginning, a tough acronym to say. Just a few questions through you to whomever, I think Jay I guess is. Can you remind me of any heritage aspects or elements of this particular Canon knitting mills?
Mr. Thorne?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, it does carry heritage designation with it and that would be one of the considerations in terms of what to do with the property.
So similar to earlier argument here in committee, there'll be possibly future debates if we were to go in another direction. Fair enough. And I'll wait for the report as well before making any assessment appropriately and accordingly. And just to confirm through the chair, we will obviously have, whomever will be offering the report, perhaps Glenn's group and the good work they do at Urban Renewal, the historical background as part of this report through you, Chair, just so I can get that verified?
Through the chair, yes.
Counselor, to the mover of the motion, I know you have probably excited a Beasley Neighborhood Association and the community there that is giddy with anticipation to get some form of movement, some conversation going and have for some time. So I fully support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. We have second-time speaker, Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you. And I just want to clarify, this isn't only going to be dealing with the Canon knitting mills. This is not about that. This is about the Realty Corporation, which is the body, the entity of which Canon knitting mills is only one, the only property that they own right now. But what this motion is referencing is the is the overall body, the corporation that is behind that. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. And so, you know, we're not just dealing with the Cannon Knitting Mills and nothing else. We are dealing with the corporation that is behind that and everything that that encompasses. But I thank you for your support very much.
We have Counsel Farr on the redirect.
And so far, so I'm sure, and I think I am, the only thing that we would, I mean, the specific bricks and mortar structure, there's only one item falls under the Hamilton Realty Capital Corporation and that is the Cannon Knitting Mills through you to Jason. There's no other. I know we were looking at the property over by the police station some years ago, but this is it?
Through the Chair, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we have the motion on the floor as stated regarding item 10.1. All those in favor? Carried. Any opposed? Item 10.2, renovations to Dalewood Recreation Center. Counselor Aiden Johnson, would you please introduce your motion?
Thank you very much, Counsel Green. I will be moving that we waive the rules so that this matter can be considered today. And my move, my motion for waiver is seconded by Counsel Collins. My overall motion regarding Dalewood Rec Center is seconded by Counselor Marula. And perhaps I could say a few words about the motion and my urgency. Oh, first we waive the rules, then I'll explain the urgency. There we go.
So we have a motion on the floor regarding the waiving of the rules. Counsel Farr, is it on the waiving of the rules?
Counselor explain why he wants to move in such haste.
I was anticipating such a question. There we go. Thank you very much. Thank you. Because I want to, suggests Counselor Marula. Well, no, I don't want to actually. But I'm doing it anyway. So this is a motion to cut to the real chase.
Counsel Johnson, this is just on the waiving of the rules?
No, no. In order to explain the waiver, I just want to say, I want to state the basic fact of the motion, which is it's a $200,000 investment from our unallocated capital reserve into Dalewood Rec Center and it's a time-sensitive investment. So
So we have the motion to waive the rules. All those in favor? Carried. Aiden Johnson on the motion.
In retrospect, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I could have just said time-sensitive investment. So there we go. To reiterate, Dalewood Rec Center is our one and only rec center in West Hill. It also serves the Ainsley Wood community, which recently lost its only community gathering space at Prince Philip School due to the closure of Prince Philip School. Council is committed to a 10-year capital plan for Dalewood Rec Center to upgrade the space. It's a crumbling, rather, to be frank, a quite mediocre rec center compared to other rec centers in the city. And we're committed to sprucing it up over a 10-year period. It's an unusual rec center because the school board owns most of it. And our partnership with the school board has been regulated since the founding of the partnership in the 1960s by a handshake contract. So one thing this motion does is put the wheels in motion for a formal contract as opposed to a handshake. The time sensitivity is this, the school board is going to be doing massive renovations to its side of the building this summer. So the rec center will be closed for that period of time. If we, the city, are going to do upgrades of our own, it makes sense to do it at the same time that the school board is doing theirs. So the motion is to partner with the school board, let the school board carry the lion's share of the legal and financial responsibility, but pony up our bit of the money, which is $200,000 from unallocated capital reserve and $100,000 from Ward 1 area rating, so that we can specifically create a change room for senior citizens who use the rec center and have to change presently alongside the schoolchildren who are changing for phys ed class. That's actually the primary expenditure. So with that colloquial explanation, I'll read out the language of the motion itself. Whereas there is a longstanding history of partnering with HWDSB for the benefit of greater Hamilton community, whereas council approved in principle in a previous term of council, a multi-year capital project totaling $16.5 million, New Dalewood Community Center, of which $1.5 million has been approved already to date and will be drawing on that, those funds as well. Whereas the city's current 10-year capital financing plan is not sufficient to accommodate New Dalewood Community Center. Whereas the Hamilton District School Board and the City of Hamilton are planning renovations to Dalewood Middle School and Dalewood Rec Center over summer 2015 and to share the costs of design and construction between the two entities. Whereas the school board is preparing a construction tender to go out in May 2015 to include our city renovations. The school board will be responsible for tendering the work and conducting the renovations. The city will be solely responsible to pay its share of the renovations. Renovations include redevelopment of change rooms and the installation of a new hot water boiler, another significant expenditure. The hot water boiler will be solely used by the City of Hamilton, but will be installed on school board property as per the previous arrangement. And whereas the City of Hamilton renovations to Dalewood Rec Center are expected to cost $1.537 million in construction with $1.237 million remaining as uncommitted in the Dalewood Center Capital Project Fund as approved by council in the budget process 2013. Therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to enter into negotiations with the school board to execute a cost-sharing contribution and license agreement with a term of 49 years. This replaces the handshake contract and any other necessary agreements. Thanks, Counsel Farr. For a new change room and a new boiler at Dalewood Rec Center and a in a form satisfactory to the city solicitor with content acceptable to Public Works, that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized and directed to execute the cost-sharing contribution and license agreement and any other necessary agreements between the city and the school board and that the general manager of Public Works or a designate be granted delegated authority to approve changes to the cost-sharing contribution and license agreement and to execute any related ancillary documentation as may be required in a form satisfactory to city solicitor. And finally, D, that the funding shortfall of $300,000 to tender construction for this project be funded as follows. $100,000 from Ward 1 area rating, $200,000 from unallocated capital reserve. Yes, with pleasure.
So members of council, you've heard the motion as so eloquently stated by Counsel colleague Aiden Johnson. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Moved by Counsel Johnson, seconded by Counsel Marula. All those in favor? Carried. Congratulations, Counsel Johnson. We are now on to item 10.3, which is a memorandum of local amendment for the Hamilton-Holton General Contractors Association, a United Brotherhood of Carpenters and Joiners of America Local 18, and the Corporation of the City of Hamilton. Counsel Ferguson, would you please introduce your motion?
I will, but first, this is time-sensitive because one of the contracts are already out for bid. So it's moved by myself, seconded by Counsel DeVal, to waive the rules to consider this today.
Members of council, on the question to waive the rules, all those in favor? Carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And what I have bringing before you today is good news. We've been debating at this council for a long time about the problem with the carpenters' union and the requirement, and which was obtained by the carpenters legally, is determined by the Labor Board and the courts, that they certified us therefore to bid on city Hamilton contracts, building contracts, you had to be first certified by the carpenters Local 18. About a year and a half ago, council asked Counsel DeVal, in his relationships with the union, and that's why I'm thrilled he's seconding this motion today, to go meet with the carpenters and help us out of this hardship, particularly in the water wastewater side, where we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars on renovations to Woodard Avenue Plan. McKinnon has regularly told us, most of the large players in that water wastewater work as non-union contractors, but they're eliminated from bidding. So Counsel DeVal was able to get confirmation from Local 18 that providing they got the forming work, they were okay with the contractor being non-union, the general contractor. While the Hamilton-Holton Home Builders Association, Hamilton-Holton General Contractors Association radically opposed this and staff hit the wall, as you may recall, in dealing with them. And it was actually Counsel Morrell that asked me to go off and got a resolution from council to meet with the contractors who were on that board to see if we could get an arrangement done. And I'm pleased to report today it is. And this will result in significantly more competition, which will significantly reduce costs. We've heard as much as 10%. And on $400 million, that's a large chunk of dough, but just by simply having more competition and being a contractor, we always knew who else is bidding a project. And if there's only one or no other bidders, we put the price up. As simple as that. It's just about reading the market. And by having more competition, it's going to improve that price. So the deal that we were able to reach, and it's very clearly laid out and it's written by Brian DeCare, our legal counsel, who's here today to support this resolution, to state that if someone's going to bid on this, they can bid as a joint venture. And only one member of that joint venture needs to be certified with Local 18. So this means two things. First of all, small general contractors like a Kemp and a Barclay, been around forever in Hamilton, were shut out of this work because their projects were too big for them. They now can hook up with the large water wastewater and they could bid as a joint venture. And according to Dan, most of these contractors like joint ventures. It gets to share the risk, so the contractors will respond. And it's very similar to having a person as a subcontractor, except they have a little skin in the game. And so Dan has polled these contractors and do the water wastewater work and they're quite amenable to this. Now they can bid, the large non-union wastewater people, and they can hook up with a local or any other person who's signatory to Local 18. And so there could be four or five members of this joint venture. Only one now needs to be signatory. And so after months and months, the city manager was involved. We met one time in his office with all his senior staff and along with the board of the Hamilton-Holton General Contractors Association. And other months of back and forth, we finally have an agreement. So the carpenters have agreed. The Hamilton-Holton General Contractors Association agree. Lawrence here to say that labor relations at the city agrees. Rick Melf from procurement agrees it'll work. And most important, the lawyers say it'll work. And so I'm pleased to place this before you today and just to make sure I didn't miss anything through you to Brian, he's up there as our lawyer. Have I covered most of the high-level issues off, Brian?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that's a good summary of the history on this and where we've landed.
Okay, so legal services fully support this?
We do, yes.
Okay, so moved myself, seconded by Counsel DeVal. And as I say, this should support or solve a lot of the problems we have with not getting competitive bids. In addition to water wastewater, this is across the city. It's not just exclusive water wastewater. In the past, we were doing a parks development. Staff would have to put out a bid first of all to do the site grading, the pathways and plant the trees and so on. And then after they finished and were gone, they would then call a second bid for the exibo or any other little structure had to go there. Now a general contractor and a landscaping contractor can joint venture bid and do it all at once, which should once again improve competition, but more importantly, not have to wait for one to be done before the other starts, which will now get before the community earlier. So that's my motion and I put it up for approval.
Thank you, Counsel Ferguson. Anytime that you and esteemed Counsel DeVal are on the same ticket, you know it's got to be a good deal.
Yeah.
Counsel DeVal, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank Counsel Ferguson and I know Counsel Morrell, when he was in his term, he had some help in this, but our staff. And I can honestly say, miracles do happen. This has been an outstanding issue since I came into office along with Counsel Ferguson. We both had opposite views of what the agreement was between the carpenters and the city. And then we had the general contractors who had disagreements with it also. It's after years and years of disputes and arguing out in the courts. And I know with the city trying in negotiations, of trying to get language, it appears that all parties have come together at the table, understood each other's position and frustrations, and have now made a tri-party agreement that everybody has agreed to. And I'm speaking on behalf of the carpenters Local 18. I have been in touch with them in the last few weeks, just tightening up some strings and with also with our legal staff. But, you know, I want to say thanks to Counsel Ferguson for his part with the generals. It took a lot of talking between these three parties to make sure that everybody had a harmonious relationship going forward. And I think this works well for everybody and including the city. We all going to benefit from this. So thank you, Counsel Ferguson.
Excellent, gentlemen. Congratulations to you both. We have the motion on the floor and we have Ms. Atwood-Pikowski would like to comment.
Through the Deputy Mayor, and it's not really a comment, it's just a belated introduction. To those of you who do not know Brian DeCare, he is our most recent addition, who joined us about a year and a half ago. And thanks to council's approval of the funding under the budget, we were able to make him permanent a couple of months ago. So we're very pleased to have him on board and you can see we're getting good results.
Welcome to the team. Congratulations on your first win. So we have the floor. All those in favor? Carried. Any opposed? None at all. Congratulations. On item 10.4, which is the Open for Business Subcommittee Amendments to the Terms of Reference, Mayor Eisenberger, would you please introduce your motion? We've already done the motion. Thank you for reminding me. On item 10.5, we have Hamilton's Vision, Mission, and Values on the city's website. Counsel Farr, would you please introduce your motion?
Yeah, well, first of all, Clerk Stephanie would tell you, I'm not one to send anything last minute to this committee. But as Murray was jumping out of the cake in his last ever appearance on Letterman last night, I did send this under the wire. And since, how impressed I am that staff have addressed this and so therefore there is no need here on our homepage of our wonderful new interactive website. Under the Connect to Your City banner, we can clearly see and then click on and see greater detail our City of Hamilton vision. So thank you very much to staff and our web team for addressing this and avoiding having to move any motions on the matter. Appreciate it. Thank you. So I'll withdraw the notice of motion.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Farr. And at this time, we would like to move to item 11, which is the general information and other business. May I please have a motion to amend the outstanding business list as shown in item 11.1 with the exception of subsections A2, A3, and A6, which are, which require additional information? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Before you, I don't believe your agenda shows subsection A1. The new due date is October 21, 2015. A2, the Hamilton Harbor Remediation, can't say that today, Remedial Action Plan, Bark. And as well, item 5, the temporary delegated authority, we'd like to just take back to get some further information. And item 3, Neil Everson could speak to that, that's the Art Gallery of Hamilton proposal to fund and raise fund to rate, a fundraise to expand the city-owned parking garage.
Mr. Everson?
You, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yes, I've had a correspondence with the CEO, Charlie Falkner. And they said at this time, they're looking at different alternatives. So I would put a new due date of November 30, 2015.
Council's heard that? Okay, so as listed, do we have a motion? Moved by Counsel Pearson, seconded by Counsel Conley. All those in favor? Carried. Excellent. Are there any other items of general information or business? Mayor Eisenberger.
So, Mr. Chair, recently, last couple of days, we had some serious gunplay on our city streets that I think we could all express dismay and concern about and worry about. I'm heartened to know that the police are on it with their guns and gang unit and are investigating as quickly as possible and providing a secure environment in the area. And, you know, it strikes me, and you know, this is very concerning. I mean, this is people out on the street, you know, pulling out a gun and firing at one another. And, you know, we could just conceptually, it's bizarre. We can't prevent idiots from being idiots, but I wonder if we can prevent idiots from having guns in our city. And I guess that my question to our legal staff would be, you know, that they explore or at least report back to this council on whether or not a municipality can actually ban guns in their own community. I'd like to have a look at that or where we could or how we could. I mean, anything that we can do to prevent people from having guns in our community, I think would be a positive step. You know, these things are, I mean, I can't for the life of me imagine why anyone in our urban environment needs a gun. And why anyone would carry a gun or brandish a gun other than for idiotic reasons, quite frankly, or to do some harm to someone. And that kind of person, we don't want to have a gun. So my question would be a direction to staff to explore and look at and wonder if there's anything a municipality can do to ban guns in our community. So that's just direction to staff to report back to council at the earliest possible date, I think. And/or whether we can ban guns anywhere in our community or bullets or whatever, whatever we can get at in terms of that issue to prevent the kind of idiotic behavior that we just saw in the behavior that we just saw in the streets just recently. It's scary, it could happen in any neighborhood, apparently. Clearly, there's a neighborhood there that's significantly impacted by this, and I think our community at large should be concerned. And so, you know, to reflect some of that concern, what can we do to prevent people from brandishing, owning, or carrying, or harboring guns of any caliber or of any kind in our urban areas in our city? So that'd be my request, Mr. Chair, that staff report back on that, and I don't think it needs a motion, but if a motion's required, I'll be happy to do that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. If you would like to go on the outstanding business, this requires a motion, if you're comfortable with direction to staff, that's your wish, that's your option as well. Through the Deputy Mayor, we could certainly bring something back quite quickly on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could pass the chair over to you and on that question?
Yep.
Certainly do appreciate the adequate response, the good response by Hamilton Police Services. I know there's been a tremendous call-out from the community, who, you know, have been subjected to, I think, a disproportionate amount of concentrated gun crime in that area. The response has been overwhelming, and in the upcoming week or so, there's been a call for a public anti-violence rally, supported by members of the community, and certainly all members of council here will be invited once details are confirmed. We're hoping to have partnerships with St. Patrick's School. Keep in mind, this is right on the corner of an elementary school, as well as a church, and quite frankly, you know, the message has to be strong and coordinated, that enough is enough, and so I thank you for your direction in that regard, and certainly hope to see what the Constitution bears out with that. So just wanted to put that on the record.
I'll take the chair back. And at this time, are there any other items of general information or other business? Seeing as that there's none, at this point, I would, may I ask that we have a motion to move into closed section respecting item 12, which is the security session for council pursuant to Section 8.1, Subsection A of the city's procedural bylaw 14-300, and Section 239, Subsection 2A of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended, and as subject to the matter pertaining to the security and property of the city. Do we have a motion? So moved by Counselor Conley, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All those in favor? Carried. At this time, we'd ask to move into closed session.